Madam Chair, we're live.
I'm going to reposition my microphone. Good morning, everyone, and welcome to the May 20th meeting of the Napa County Board of Supervisors. I will call this meeting to order and ask for roll call, please.
Vice Chair Manfree?
Here.
Supervisor Ramos is excused today. Supervisor Lessio?
Here.
Supervisor Gallagher?
Here.
Chair Cottrell?
Here. And I would like to ask Napa County Library Director Anthony Halsted to lead us in the Pledge of Allegiance. Thank you. Thank you, Mr. Halsted. And now, we will introduce our Pets of the Week. That's plural. I believe we have Chala and Toothless in the house. Two medium-haired, eight-week-old kittens. Good morning, Louise, and thank you, Melissa, for helping out this morning. What can you tell us about these two?
I had to get some backup because I don't think I could have done this all by myself. And I also found out you guys have some really good kitty handlers. These guys were getting spoiled back there. I could definitely learn a thing or two from the people back there on how to pet a kitten. But today, we have Toothless and then his brother T'Challa. They are both about 10-week-old kittens. They were found as strays here in the city of Napa, and they have been with us since they were approximately... Yeah. The more help, the better. Just be careful. He does like to climb shoulders, okay? We'll help you in case he starts doing that. But they were both found when they were about four weeks old here at the city of Napa. Since they came to the shelter, we went ahead and immediately got them started on some preventative care. Right now, we are going through something known as kitten season, whether you're familiar with it or not, around this time of year. Sometimes, we get unlucky, and it's all the way up until December, when cats in the community are reproducing, they're having kittens, and then you're going to see a lot of these little guys out and about. Here you go. We'll reset him. So you can kind of tell these guys are all very, very social, very handleable. So the goal that we have for our foster parents is to, once they come to the shelter, we get them into a foster home. And then, once they're in a foster home, we usually educate fosters on what we expect them to do, whether it's bottle-feeding them, feeding them their dry food, canned food. But ultimately, it's getting them to a point where they're like this, where they're getting really, really social, they get curious, they're handleable. Even in a room like this, they're not under a lot of stress. They're just very, very calm and relaxed. But yeah.
Thank you so much. And I think he's just having fun here, so. Thank you, Louise, for bringing them in today. And just as a reminder, the shelter will waive the fees for both T'Challa and Toothless for this week, so please stop by and meet them. Thank you, guys. You want to let him take a stroll through here? All right, that was a nice visit. And now, we will move on to our two proclamations today. We have proclamations recognizing Historic Preservation Month and Asian-American, Native Hawaiian, and Pacific Islander Heritage Month. And we have representatives from Phil Am Napa American Canyon here. Thanks for being here. And Napa Landmarks. So I will go ahead and read the presentation. I'd like to ask Teri Wonderlich to come up to the podium to accept it. So actually, before I read the presentation, I am going to ask for... As a board, we do need to approve the presentation before. So I'd like to ask for a motion to approve these two proclamations.
I'll make a motion to approve both proclamations. I'll second.
Thank you. Motion by Supervisor Lessio, second by Supervisor Gallagher. All in favor?
Aye.
Aye. All right. Any public comment on these two or on the phones? Okay, great. Thanks. National Historic Preservation Month, May 2025. The National Historic Preservation Act of 1966 established the National Register of Historic Places, recognizing the importance of protecting America's historic, cultural, and architectural resources for future generations. In 1993, May was designated Historic Preservation Month in the United States to raise awareness of historic preservation, instill national and community pride, promote heritage tourism, and highlight the social, economic, and environmental benefits of historic preservation. Napa County Landmarks is a nonprofit organization founded in 1974. It's an award-winning advocate for reusing and protecting significant places, providing education and technical support, and promoting economic vitality through the preservation of our architectural heritage. Landmarks efforts include the preservation of historic structures throughout the county, from Art Deco storefronts to Victorian-era mansions, from mid-century modern ranch homes to our one-of-a-kind stone bridges and distinctive wineries. Recognizing the significance of history in our lives is essential, as well as acknowledging the efforts who have contributed... Excuse me, the efforts of individuals who have contributed to the preservation of tangible elements like these sites and artifacts. This month honors the heritage that has significantly influenced our society and cultivates a respect for our shared past and the insights it offers for the future. Now, therefore, be it proclaimed that this Board of Supervisors, County of Napa, State of California, on this 20th day of May 2025, does hereby recognize May 25 as Historic Preservation Month in Napa County. Congrats and welcome, Teri. Thank you for being here. Did you want to say a couple of words?
I'll just say a couple. First of all, thank you to the supervisors and all the members of Napa County because we have to work together to continue to respect what has been and respect how we're going forward. And preserving our history is really, really important to our community, and looking forward is just as important. So thank you for your support.
Thank you. And we'd love to do a photo. Do you guys want to come down for a photo, please?
Okay, so we have a second proclamation honoring representatives from Phil Am of American Canyon and recognizing Asian-American, Native Hawaiian, and Pacific Islander Heritage Month, which is May 2025. So I'm going to go ahead and read this, and I'd also like to invite representatives of Phil Am to join me here. And if you want to say a few words after we run through this, you're welcome to. So it's great to have you here. Thank you for being here today. Good morning. The Napa County Board of Supervisors proudly recognizes May 2025 as Asian-American, Native Hawaiian, and Pacific Islander Heritage Month in Napa County. We celebrate the diversity of AAN HPI community in Napa County and their vast achievements and contributions in various sectors, including healthcare, technology, the arts, agriculture, and public service that have significantly advanced the progress and prosperity of Napa County. On March 28, 1979, President Jimmy Carter issued the first presidential proclamation declaring the first week of May as National Asian-American and Pacific Islander Heritage Week. Later, in 1992, Congress passed a law designating the whole month of May as Asian-American, Native Hawaiian, and Pacific Islander Heritage Month. Napa County has been deeply shaped by the lives and labor of Asian immigrants since the mid-1800s, beginning with Chinese immigrants who contributed to local agriculture, infrastructure, and vineyard development, and who established one of California's earliest Chinatowns in the city of Napa. Through this vibrant community... Though this vibrant community was later displaced, its cultural legacy lives on through historic sites like China Point Overlook Park and the Sam Key Laundry Building. Japanese immigrants made lasting contributions through farming and viticulture, often under difficult and unjust conditions, including forced incarceration during World War II. Yet, they continued to rebuild and strengthen the Napa County community post-war. Filipino immigrants arriving largely in the early 20th century played a vital role in vineyard labor and community building, laying the groundwork for civic organizations that endure today. The Filipino-American Association of American Canyon, known as Phil Am, was established during a gathering of friends in September 2002. Since then, this remarkable organization has flourished into a vibrant community of 50 members who share a passion for embracing cultural diversity and fostering unity. Their mission is to celebrate and nurture values that promote togetherness and strength through the rich tapestry of cultural heritage and the importance of family and dedicated service to the community. Preserving and honoring the rich heritage of AAN HPI communities enriches the cultural fabric of our region, promotes mutual respect and understanding, and reflects our shared commitment to equity and inclusiveness. So, therefore, be it proclaimed that this Board of Supervisors, County of Napa, State of California, on this 20th day of May 2025, does hereby recognize this month as Asian-American, Native Hawaiian, and Pacific Islander Heritage Month in Napa County. And we call upon community members to engage in programs, activities, and reflections that uplift the stories, achievements, and continued contributions of the AAN HPI community and reaffirm our collective commitment to building a more just, equitable, and prosperous future for all. So here is proclamation for you.
All right.
And yeah, so would you like to...
Thank you very much.
You're welcome.
Thank you.
Of course.
Good morning, everyone. Good morning, supervisors. Chair Cottrell? Thank you very much for this recognition. Again, Phil Am of American Canyon, our mission is to share our heritage through our music, our food, our culture. And we are proud to say that we are one of the biggest minority groups in American Canyon and also now further into the county. So again, thank you very much for this recognition. We hope to continue working with you and your support in fostering this partnership with our Filipino community in American Canyon. Thank you.
Thank you so much. Let's have you gather in the well, and we'll do a photo, too. Great. Great, thank you. I love it when our proclamations kind of form a theme. We talk about historic heritage and cultural heritage and looking back while we look ahead. So with that, I will move us on to item number five, the consent calendar for special districts. We have items 5A and 5B. Do I have any board comments or items to pull off the special district calendar? Okay? Anyone wishing to make public comment in the room or on the phones? Okay? Then I will ask for a motion to move this forward.
So moved.
Is there a second?
I'll second.
Okay. Motion by Supervisor Gallagher, second by Supervisor Manfree. All those in favor?
Aye.
Aye? Any opposed? Motion carries.
Madam Chair?
Mm-hmm.
Supervisor Ramos was trying to phone in during the AAN, Asian American Heritage proclamation. Can she make a comment?
Absolutely.
Would that be okay?
Okay. Good morning, Supervisor Ramos. How is the weather in Washington, DC?
Supervisor Ramos, you're live on air. Can you hear us?
I don't think we...
Yeah.
Yes.
Not able to hear us.
Okay.
There might be some audio issue. She's been trying to get through to us.
Okay.
All right.
Do you, maybe she could text you, and we could break for a...
Okay.
Yeah, okay.
We'll do that.
Okay, thank you.
Thank you.
So we will move on to item six, the consent calendar. We are going to pull item 6A. And do I have any board comments on any other items or any other requests to pull? Nope. Okay. Anyone wishing to make public comment on, I'll take public comment on all the items 6A through 6AK, excuse me, yes, 6AK. Anyone on the phone?
Nope.
Okay. Then we will go ahead and we will take 6B through 6AK as a vote. Can I have a motion for that?
So moved.
All right. Motion by Supervisor Alessio, is there a second?
I'll second.
Second by Supervisor Manfree. All those in favor to approve 6B through 6AK? Say aye.
Aye.
Aye? Motion carries unanimously, and we will return to item 6A under nine. Okay, at this point, we are on item seven, public comment. This is the opportunity to provide public comment for anyone who wishes to speak on items not on the agenda. If you want to do so, please come forward, state your name, and keep it to three minutes, please. Anyone in the room today for public comment? Okay, anyone on the phones?
There is. Let me make sure it's for this item.
Okay.
Having the clerk staff verify what item this caller is for. Okay, it's for general public comment. We have one caller. Thank you.
Good morning.
Good morning, Jeff. Can you test your audio?
Hello, can you hear me?
Yes, we can. Can you hear us?
Can you hear me?
Yes. The problem is...
Can you hear me?
Is the problem on?
Problem is on our end. Jeff, can you hear us? Jeff, can you hear us? Jeff, testing again, can you hear us?
Can you hear me?
Yes, we can hear you.
Can you hear me?
Okay, so what's happening? We're...
Okay, so what's happening?
Not able to have the person here online.
Not able to have the person here online. Okay.
Sure, why don't we take a five-minute recess?
Sure, why don't we take a five-minute recess?
And return at 9:27.
Return at 9:27. Recording stopped. Hello?
Can I have someone from the AV room, please, join me in the clerk station?
Do I recall them, I wonder?
.............................................................................................................................................................................................................................................................................................................................................................................................................................................................................................................................................................................. So, hang on, so, hang on.
So we're back on air. Are we? Thank you, everyone. It looks like we are back on air. We're going to wait a couple of moments here while our stalwart staff gets settled.
Can we try Jeff again?
Okay, great. We are going to continue with our public comment and see if we can get our speaker who is on the phone here with us. So we're resuming the meeting now with public comment.
Jeff, if you can hear us, we're going to launch your call right now. Can you confirm your sound, please? Jeff, are you there?
Okay. So why don't we move on? We can, we can return to item six if we need to later in the...
So I would, this has happened before, and so what I suggest is if people have public comment and are trying our public comment line, again, technology fails, so I recommend you please email your public comment at publiccomment@countyofnapa.org, or you can submit it in writing via postal mail, you have a couple options, or you can call your district supervisor, or you can call the clerk's office at 707-253-4580, and one way or the other, we'll get your comment heard. So we're sorry for the inconvenience.
Thank you so much, Ms. Hoskins. All right, so we will move on to agenda item number eight, Board of Supervisors Reports and Announcements. I will turn to my colleagues. Supervisor Alessio.
Thank you. Well, I know we're always, all of us are out there, busy in the community, but I just wanted to recognize a couple, a couple of events that I attended and some folks who were recently recognized. First of all, on May 8, now-retired Executive Director of the Napa Valley Transportation Authority had a lovely retirement reception. So I want to thank Kate Miller for her many years in the transportation and transit arena. She's actually also on the state board, the only and first woman to be invited to be on this transit authority through California. And she'll, she'll continue on that board, but she is going to be retired effective next month, though I think that she's, I think her, the next executive director, which has been her deputy director, Danielle Schmidt, is, is acting executive director. Very excited for Danielle Schmidt to be the executive director. She comes with many, many years of experience in this area with NVTA, so we're in good hands there. I also want to, and I know that I think almost everybody was at the Grape Growers 50th Anniversary. That was a wonderful event, recognizing our farmers and vintners, and wanted to congratulate Oscar Ventura for being awarded and honored that night, a true testament to so many people who are dedicated to this community and the work they do to support all of us in terms of our economy especially. I did attend my first Allied Council meeting at the Veterans Home. That was wonderful. That was on May 14, and I found, found it very interesting. They have a lot of activities. It's very lively out there. So I just wanted to thank them for including me and being invited. I did get to speak, not on behalf of the, the board, because your, your board aide spoke on behalf of, because this is your district supervisor, Cottrell, Chair, Chair Cottrell. But I did speak on behalf of a small grassroots nonprofit that I've been involved in for many, many years called Operation Love From Home, and invite the veterans to attend. And Molly's Angels, which is a nonprofit organization that provides transportation, is coordinating with the Veterans Home to bring the veterans out to a care package assembly on June 14, which is Flag Day, so they can join us in filling care packages on that day. And if anybody wants to volunteer for Operation Love From Home, please let us know. And we'll be filling 1,000 care packages on that day. Just two more. CVN, now the Center for Volunteer Nonprofit Leadership, that was also a wonderful awards luncheon, recognizing, you know, folks in our community who volunteer and who are part of this, the fabric of this community and serving our community. Nancy Lewis received Volunteer of the Year with the Operation Love From Home, but it was, it was great. I really encourage other people to get involved and become a sponsor next year, because those, those funds for sponsors go back to the nonprofits. So it's also lifts the nonprofits up financially, which they all need, especially at this time. And the last one is the Spirit Horse Ranch. And if you don't, not familiar with the Spirit Horse Ranch, it's located in American Canyon, and they provide equestrian therapy for our youth and for veterans, and they also had a fundraiser. So lots of great things in the community. Thank you.
Thank you, Supervisor Alessio. Reports from Supervisor Manfree or Supervisor Gallagher? Go ahead.
Yeah, I'm happy, happy to make a few reports here. It's been a busy couple of weeks in Napa County. I enjoyed a ride along with the Agricultural Commissioner, and I'm looking forward to the update later in this meeting from, from that office. I also had the opportunity to tour the Highway 37 site and see what the proposed changes are in the field with some really helpful and knowledgeable staff people from several different agencies. And attended the Napa Valley Community Housing Rising Star Scholarships Awards Ceremony at Napa Valley College, which was really heartwarming and wonderful, and big thanks to all the sponsors for that. It's making a huge difference in young people's lives. And May is Bike to, Bike Month, and Abigail Flores, Board aide for District 4, and I staffed the county's Bike to Work Station, or Bike to Wherever Station, out here in front of the county building last week, and we had lots and lots of people come by. It was a very successful event throughout the community with dozens of stations organized by the Napa Bicycle Coalition. They did a great job. I also had the opportunity to get out and see Walt Ranch with the Land Trust for the first time, and that was absolutely stunning. I can't wait for that to become a recreational opportunity for the whole community, and they're thinking very carefully about how they're going to roll that out. So that's something for all of us to look forward to. This last Sunday was the Vintage Bike Tour, which was really fun. That was a 10-mile ride where people brought out the oldest bike that they had and, and rode together. So that was really super. And I also got out with the Groundwater Sustainability Agency staff from planning to do a field trip up valley, looking at wells and monitoring devices in the Napa River. So, busy times.
Thank you, Supervisor Manfree. Supervisor Gallagher?
Thank you. Thank you to my colleagues, because you mentioned lots of activities that many of us were present for. I did want to mention that we had the If Given a Chance Award Ceremony. Please attend that annually if you have a chance. It's really super inspiring and really amazing, young people who are really receiving scholarships but have lived through so much in their short lives and have really great and moving stories to tell. So... So please get out to that event if you can in the future. I had the opportunity to pop into the Sheriff's Citizens Academy for one of their sessions, and that was really interesting, and thank you to the, to the deputies there. Also, just wanted to mention that Supervisor Katrelle and I had the opportunity as GSA members to yesterday tour Silver Creek and also the Napa River at Calistoga and look at some of the projects. And wanted to thank reps from RCD, from our, from County PPS, Ludo from Scalamini, and Stillwater Sciences, as well as our tag for taking us on that tour and providing us with a good education around what's happening on the Napa River. So that's it for me. Thanks.
Thank you. Yeah, I would just echo the, the many wonderful events, the, the retirement of Kate Miller, the Grape Growers 50th was wonderful celebration, and this tour that we just took was not only a chance to be educated, but brainstorm a little bit about potential recharge solutions along different reaches of the Napa River. So thank you to the teams for that. I also wanted to say thank you to our State Senator, Christopher Cabaldin. Last week was the announcement of the California Governor's May Budget Revice with a lot of challenging news for counties, and he put together a Zoom call to update many folks, many local electeds in his district, talking about where we will have challenges and where he might help us find solutions. So it's great to have that close partnership. I also wanted to report that up in PUC, in Angwin, there was a prescribed burn last week, 28 acres in the PUC forest. And I, it was great to be up there at the beginning and then in the very smoky middle of the project. It took about an, all day to, to get the fire going and then to watch it, and it's had eyes on it the entire time. Multiple organizations participated in it. We have a great Prescribed Burn Association here in Napa County, also partnering with folks from other counties as well, so volunteers, lots of Napa County Fire folks out there, and volunteer stations represented also, and RCD again. So these projects take a lot of planning and teamwork, and it's great to see them go so well. And I want to give a particular shout out to Peter La Court, who has been the PUC Forester for years and has been planning for this project for some time. And you have to have the right circumstances, and they finally hit last week. So that's exciting. It makes that area safer and more resilient. And then today, later on in our agenda, we will get to a Planning Commission item. So I wanted to take this opportunity to acknowledge and thank my previous Planning Commissioner, Heather Phillips, who stepped back from the appointment on the Planning Commission. She was my appointee to the Planning Commission for the past two and a half years. I first got to know Heather when I joined the Planning Commission in 2014. She was already serving as Brad Wagonknecht's Planning Commissioner. She'd served from 2006 to 2016 for him, 10 years. And she always did her homework, thought carefully about projects, visited sites, did all the reading, asked good and challenging questions. And her family grows grapes and makes wine, and is also really committed to the long-term protection of the ag preserve. So she offered a very unique perspective and set of expertise, and her voice was an important one on the Planning Commission. So Heather, I know this makes you uncomfortable to be thanked publicly, but I really wanted to take the moment and say thank you for your years of service on the Planning Commission. And I'm sure that the current commissioners will look to you for advice and perspective for years to come. And then another item I wanted to share, another thank you and farewell. We received news late last week that Dave Shu, our Fire Administrator, will be leaving us at the end of the month to retire, but knowing him also to pursue other endeavors. Mr. Shu was the first to serve in the Fire Administrator role position for us and working with our CEO and our Fire Chief. He's helped usher in a new era for us and an important one. We hired Dave to create a vision for long-term fire resilience, and he built that vision for us, and now we are in the process of executing on that vision. So we're very fortunate to have had Dave Shu here. I want to thank him for his service to our organization and the county. Please join me in congratulating Dave. And the final item I have is something of a referral. Several weeks ago, many members of our board and, and members of our staff too were fortunate to get a presentation, a set of presentations from the Napa Valley Vintners in a really educational day where we heard from different vintners and also folks who are in the, the business side of the wine business too, as well as the agricultural side. And it was really interesting and helpful in understanding the role that the industry plays, the, the challenges that they face. And so I'd like to ask our CEO if we could, if you could work with the vintners to see if we could get another kind of condensed version of that here as part of a board meeting or as a special session that we could do with the Planning Commission. We have a lot of new Planning Commissioners, so it seems like a great opportunity to bring both of those bodies together and kind of hear about the state of things. I think that would be really helpful. Okay, great. Thank you. Okay, so with that, we will go ahead and move on to item number nine, Discussion of Items Pulled from the Consent Calendar. And what we have here is item 6A. Good morning, Mr. Tudor.
Good morning, Chair Katrelle, members of the board. John Tudor with my assessor hat on. For many of you, this may be the first time you saw one of these items where you have to authorize the auditor controller to issue an escape assessment of greater than $10 million. You also have to authorize the auditor controller to give back more than $10 million, and that does happen, that's in value, not in taxes. That does happen occasionally. I do want to share with you, even in my 39th year, this is the largest one we've brought to you, so I can understand why you're interested in it. So just briefly, as the assessor, my job is to locate and value all property in Napa County. As you know from your travels, land and buildings are easy to do. It's harder to do for boats and aircraft and business property. And we have a business property division that relies on reports from the owners of that property to provide us with the information we need to prepare a fair assessment. We have about 6,000 accounts of business property. We have several hundred aircraft and several thousand boats, all of whom report to us, and we work with them to come up with a fair value. As a part of the business property side, which is this item, we also, by state law, are required to do audits of certain number of organizations. There are 57 audits we're supposed to do each year based on our number of businesses that we deal with. Half of those audits are from our largest businesses. The other half are for other businesses that are not in the top tier. So the audit process, we send a letter to the property owner telling them that they're being audited. We ask for information. Our staff then stays in communication with them. Usually takes eight months to nine months to complete an audit from beginning until it's done. And during that entire period, we keep in contact with the property owner and their representatives. In this case, and the reason these are such large escapes, is that there was a reporting issue from the property owner to us and a sidebar of our staff not properly capturing some of what was reported to us when we switched from paper filing to electronic filing a couple of years ago. With an organization the size of this winery, which is a large winery, these kinds of escapes and these kinds of values are not unknown. A large winery can have several millions of dollars' worth of equipment that operates their winery, produces their wine, and does all of that. And in this case, what occurred was that their reporting and our processing of that reporting resulted in missing large amounts of equipment, primarily tanks, which are, have a 40-year life and have very high values, that over the course of the four years were not correctly reported and not correctly processed. So during this whole period, we've been in touch with the winery. The Chief Financial Officer is part of our contact group. We just had an exchange with him yesterday. He's reviewing these numbers, and he is then working with our staff to make sure that his final understanding of what we did is correct. But for this process, what I need to explain to you is this is the beginning of a process. You don't see the thousands of escapes that we do every year and the thousands of refunds, because they're on a much smaller scale. So occasionally, one pops up for you to pay attention to, and thank you for paying attention to it. In this case, when you take this action to allow the auditor controller to process these rule corrections, that starts a process. That does not end it. From the moment that the property owner gets the notice of escape assessment, which they will receive in a day or so, assuming the board moves forward, we open a communication again with them, which we've already started. As you know, the CFO at the winery end is reviewing our audit findings. He complimented me in a phone call with Supervisor Alessio at how complete the findings were, and that he actually has his fixed asset accountant on site this week, so they're going over it. If they have any questions after reviewing their filings and our narrative explaining what came up with these escapes, he'll be in touch with our staff. From the moment they get the tax bill, which will be in a week to 10 days, they have 60 days to file an application for changed assessment or an appeal with the AAB. We don't think that's going to happen in this case, because we've had this communication and will continue to do so. But I just wanted to make clear to the board that your authorizing this authorizes the beginning of a process. It's not the end of the process. And I'd be happy to answer any questions if there are any.
Thank you, Mr. Tudor. Supervisor Alessio, I mean, excuse me, Supervisor Gallagher.
You too. Our lights aren't working, by the way, too. Just FYI.
It's not a good day for television.
Thank you, Mr. Tudor, for joining us and explaining this. Wanted to know how you determine who you are going to audit? Is it a random selection? And how many, how do you determine how many years back you're going to go?
So we are required to do four years of an audit, and in some cases, we can go back further if the property owner agrees to allow us to go back. I do want to point out that unlike the Internal Revenue Service, our audits are not revenue-producing. Approximately half of our audits give back money. So we've had large refunds in the several million dollars that have come up over the last few months and come up regularly with people who've been reporting things that they disposed of 10 years ago. And it's only during the time of the audit that we catch it. So we only have a small pool of large properties that qualify for the first tier of audits. So we usually see them every five or six years. It's a rotating, it's not, the lower ones are more at our discretion. Oftentimes, we find somebody who hasn't been reporting and has been paying estimated values or being charged estimated values, and it turns out they're up to $40,000, because they haven't reported to us for 10 years, and they should be at $4,000 in value. And that's where some of the larger refunds come in.
And when we see that we have made errors on our side, how is that then handled? How, how is that rectified going forward?
Well, in, every instant is different. This was the conversion from paper to electronic filing, and in the process of that, a lot of this large equipment was seen, was originally reported as if it were real property, buildings, which our real property staff take care of. It was only in the audit and reviewing the electronic filings that we discovered that this equipment should have been assessed by us, was not assessed by real property, because it's tanks, and that's business equipment. It's not real property. So that's just one of those things. We do the best we can, but depending on reporting, et cetera, and I know the CFO knows about that it's a shared system where we have to rely on their reporting in part to make sure we're getting the right information. And I've been very supportive for my 39 years of the audit program, because as I said, my job's to be fair. While I like providing revenue for the board, that's not my job. And so it's been very comforting to me to know that about half the time, the audits show that they've paid more than they should have rather than less.
So have we ever had a case where, and this could be on both sides, where we are collecting on these, and then in the, in the future, the property owner comes back and says, well, I don't believe that was correct, and then we have to give money back? I mean, I could just see it. This is a very, very large amount. So just thinking ahead in terms of any future consequences to the county, should we ever have to give some of that money back?
Well, I can give you a different example, but the Kaiser Permanente has a huge data center here in Napa. It's one of their four large data centers in the nation. And they got the bright idea, which was right, that perhaps it's welfare exempt, because it's providing support for the doctors and the patients and all of us who are Kaiser clients. We looked at, I suggested to them that they file three extra years, because they can go back four years, just like we do with these audits. At the end, we gave back almost $1 billion in value, because it was four years of $200 million each year that was now exempt, that wasn't. Again, fairness and equity is my job. That had an impact. One school district had to lay off a teacher for a year because their, their revenues were cut. But as I said, my job is valuation, not raising money. So it goes both ways. As I said, about half the time, the property owners paid more than they should have because of their reporting. And when we do the audit, they figure out the reporting. It's then correct from there forward, and we don't go through that.
Thank you.
Supervisor Alessio.
Thank you. Thank you, Mr. Tudor, for, for the explanation. And, and as you shared, I had some concerns with this item initially too, a little confusion because of the amount. And, and after reading the staff report, I, I wanted to have a deeper understanding. So I did talk to our auditor, Tracy Schultz, who was very helpful. I then reached out to Mr. Tudor's office, and I spoke to his staff member, Jennifer, who was also lovely and helpful. I just wanted to be, I just wanted to make sure that this property owner was aware that this was on our agenda and make sure that they were comfortable, they didn't have any issues. And that led into a conference call with Mr. Tudor and the CFO of this winery. And, and I, everybody is, is in a good space and, and a good understanding. I just want to provide that reassurance. I also learned that the assessor's office assesses if this is correct, but Jennifer told me, if I understood correctly, 56,000 properties? Or is it 56,000? She gave me the number 56,000.
Well, it's actually more than that. We have about 55,000 plus real properties.
Okay.
That's your homes, et cetera. And then we, in addition to that, we have the several thousand boats, the several hundred aircraft, and the 6,000 business property assessments, which are unsecured. So we're pushing 65,000 total assessments.
Thank you. And then additionally, just, just for transparency, as the staff report says, that anything that's $10 million or more that's been assessed or reassessed through an audit comes to the board. Anything under $10 million, it's then handled by staff. And there is an additional assessment of $9 million for 2021. That's not on here, because it's under that $10 million. But just, just so that it's for transparency, I wanted to share that. And then it seems like, and you know, this was completely unintentional by the winery. It, I do think that possibly that going from the paper report to the electronic online reporting, there was some confusion there. Maybe that's how this happened, but it wasn't intentional. Staff is working with the winery on this. There is a penalty, and I was going to ask you what that penalty is.
All right, so in one year, the winery failed to file, and that, under the law, requires a 10% penalty. So in this amount, it was the '22 year, which is one of the years you're looking at. The penalty is included in that amount, but it's just the one year, and it was for failure to file. It has nothing to do with whether they reported too much or too little.
Oh, they just didn't report at all in 2022?
That's right. And that, that happens. Even with the most sophisticated businesses, occasionally they fail to file or something happens, they change controllers or whatever.
Okay, great. And then the next part in this process, so just for clarification, you, you mentioned this once, but just for clarification, and we talked about this yesterday too, with the CFO. once, but just for clarification, and we talked about this yesterday too with the CFO, is that if the board does approve this item, what's next is that they will receive a notice, correct, from your office? And that will happen in roughly, I think you said like in 10 days, two weeks kind of thing?
That's right.
And then from that point, they can go through an appeal process. And to file an appeal is only $75.
That's correct.
And then they have, is it 60 days if I remember correctly?
To file the appeal.
To file the appeal.
From the date the tax bill is mailed.
Okay, very good. And so I just wanted to make sure that we all understood that too. It's been a learning process for me to go through this. And as I said, the winery is well informed and working with our staff and auditor.
And I think, if I may, one of the things that raised Supervisor Alessio's concern was that our letter to the winery was dated March 12th.
Yeah.
And here we are, March 20th, asking the board to take action. Well, our conversations with the winery, as the audits seem to shape up, were started in February and have been ongoing. And our staff member who's working with the CFO, they're on a first-name basis, so they've, we've been in constant contact and we just emailed the CFO, I copied Supervisor Alessio, saying, we're ready when you're ready to go over the detailed audit findings and your filings if there are any questions.
Great, thank you.
Say again? Oh, I'm sorry. It's a $150 filing for a commercial property, for the appeal. And that goes into the general fund through the clerk of the board. That has nothing to do with our office.
Yeah, the letter, I was concerned regarding the letter, didn't seem like it gave them enough time to respond. And as it's there, the person that's on staff for them to do this is there this week. So they'll be working on it this week.
Great. Well, thank you, Mr. Tudor, for the time. Appreciate that. So I will turn to my colleagues and ask for a motion on item 6A.
So moved.
Is there a second?
I'll second.
Okay. Motion by Supervisor Gallagher.
Sorry.
Oh, I believe maybe you took public comment as part of the consent, Gallagher. Okay, thank you for that.
Yeah, sure, thank you. So we have a motion by Supervisor Gallagher, a second by Supervisor Manfree. All those in favor?
Aye.
Motion carries unanimously. All right, so we will now move to item, we have no special district administrative items, so we will move to item 11A. And I will ask Ms. Hoskins to read us through this one.
Thank you, Madam Chair. Today's item before you is to appoint District 3 Supervisor, which is Supervisor Ann Cottrell. Her nomination for Molly Moran Williams to the Napa County Planning Commission. Molly's term, if appointed, will follow Supervisor Ann Cottrell's term on the Planning Commission. And we do have Molly here present. She was the only one who applied, so we thank her for her interest and willingness to serve and volunteer.
So at this point, I will go ahead and open it up. Is there any public comment in the room or on the phones?
No phones today.
Okay, no, no phones today.
[laughing]
Okay, then I will bring it back to the board for discussion. And I wanted to begin the discussion by saying Molly is a smart and thoughtful person who has a lot of background and expertise in our local land use arena. She is a good listener and someone who works to understand all the details while also keeping her eye on the big picture. She understands the importance of our ag preserve and the long-term sustainability of our local grape-growing and wine-making industry, as well as our natural resources and all our communities. She works well with others and I expect she will make a great addition to the Planning Commission. So I will now turn to Supervisor Gallagher.
Just ditto to Chair Cottrell. Really excited to welcome Molly to the Planning Commission. I've really enjoyed working with Molly for many years now and she's going to be an awesome addition. And so we're all very much looking forward to having Molly at the Planning Commission.
Supervisor Alessio.
I concur on all of the above. Thank you, Molly, for stepping up. This is a, this is a big ask and very excited with your background, your expertise. I'm always learning from you. When we get together, I learn something. And you think also out of the box. You think solutions towards, you know, always a way in terms of solutions and ideas and questions. So she's going to be a phenomenal addition. So thank you, Molly.
Yeah, and I'd also like to add that Molly's just been a delight to work with in every opportunity I've had to, you know, have an encounter with her and look at a project. She's not only knowledgeable, but she's a great listener and that's a critical skill for this role. So Molly, I can't see, I can't wait to see where you take this. I think it's going to be really good for the county.
So with that, I will ask for a motion.
So moved.
And motion by Supervisor Alessio?
Second.
Second by Supervisor Gallagher. All those in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Motion passes unanimously. And now I would like to ask Molly Moran Williams to come up to the podium and Neha Hoskins can administer the oath of office.
Thanks for coming. So we're going to stand here and into the mic. You're going to raise your right hand and face the microphone.
And we want to get a good photo for your daughter, too.
Right. You're going to read this statement right here. And then you're going to sign and then I'll sign. Okay, thanks. Raise your right hand. Oops. I'll pick it up. Okay. Thank you. Okay, thank you. I am Molly Moran Williams. Do solemnly swear or affirm that I will support and defend the Constitution of the United States and the Constitution of the State of California against all enemies, foreign and domestic. And I will bear truth, true faith and allegiance to the Constitution of the United States and the Constitution of the State of California, that I take this obligation freely without any mental reservation or purpose of evasion, and that I will well and faithfully discharge the duties upon which I am about to enter.
Thank you and welcome. If you want to make a comment, Molly, you're welcome to at this point.
Sure. Yeah, you know, I've, thank you Chair Cottrell and members of the board for all your kind comments. I've been on this side of the podium, you know, many, many times before, but I'm really looking forward to a new perspective, sitting on the other side of the dais and serving from there. And, you know, in my experience, professional experience thus far, I've really felt that continual dialogue around what is smart planning is really a pillar of a thriving community. And so I'm just really honored to be among the many people, community stakeholders, county staff, elected officials included, who are part of the engine that powers, you know, protecting our agricultural heritage, preserving our ecological spaces and ensuring economic resiliency for this community. And, you know, as was mentioned, I'm a parent in this community, raising my child, and I'm part of a grape-growing family. So I'm simply deeply connected to this place and really honored to have the chance to serve it. So thank you for the appointment today.
Wonderful, thank you. And unlike your Planning Commission appointment, you can leave early from this meeting. With that, I will move us to item 11B, which is an appointment of one of the following applicants to represent the public at large to the Napa County Wildlife Conservation Commission with term, with a term of office to commence immediately and expire February 1, 2026. And we have two applicants. We have Leslie Liu and Laura Snyderman. So what I'm going to do is go ahead and take public comment on this item and then bring it back to the board. Is there any public comment in the room? And I won't ask about the phones. And with that, I will bring it back to my colleagues and ask for comments, discussion, and a potential recommendation. Supervisor, sorry, I'll go ahead and I'll go Supervisor Gallagher, Supervisor Alessio, and Supervisor Manfree.
Okay, thank you Chair Cottrell. And thank you so much to the qualified applicants, both of whom are great, you know, community, active people in the community and certainly qualified for this position. I just wanted to speak out on behalf of Leslie Liu. Leslie, I know Leslie very well. She's very active in the community and has been involved both personally and professionally in environmental conservation efforts for many, many decades. I think reading her application, seeing that she has been a grant reviewer for the commission, gives her a level of really important experience with the commission. And also having been a grantee, she can share a unique perspective that can really inform the commission. So I just wanted to say that I will be supporting Leslie. So that's my point of discussion at this point.
Thank you. Supervisor Alessio.
Thank you. Well, you know, we're in a good position here. We have two excellent applicants and very grateful for both of them for applying and going through this process. I also know Leslie Liu and have seen her demonstrate her commitment and dedication to this community in many, in many ways. When she commits to something, she's, she's all in. She's a wonderful spokesperson. She does her due diligence and I have complete faith in her in this position. So I appreciate both applications, they're both very strong, but I too support Leslie Liu. Thank you.
Thank you Supervisor Alessio. Supervisor Manfree.
Thank you. Yeah, again, we have two really qualified applicants. I would say this is just a remarkably good, good situation for us to be in as decision-makers. You're both bringing a lot of passion to this, a strong connection to the community to this. I know Leslie has a very deep knowledge and a lot of work experience in the field of natural resources, which I really appreciate, so.
Great, thank you. Okay, so I also know both applicants and I'm glad to, that we have two smart, qualified women stepping up to throw their hats in the ring. I would agree that I think Leslie comes forward with a lot of experience right in this area, so I think would be a great fit in this role. And I hope that Laura will continue to look for opportunities. She's very active in the Calistoga community and I think it is really important to have, to make sure we're getting voices from Up Valley involved in our county organizations. So I will look forward to supporting her in the future, too. So at this point, could I ask for a motion?
I will go ahead and move to appoint Leslie Liu as the, to represent the public at large to the Napa County Wildlife Conservation Commission with terms of office to commence immediately and expire February 1, 2026.
I'll second.
Motion by Supervisor Gallagher, second by Supervisor Alessio. All those in favor?
Aye.
Motion carries unanimously. Congratulations, Leslie. All right, so with that, I will move us on to item 11C. We will receive a presentation from the Agricultural Commissioner on the annual crop report for 2024. Good morning.
Good morning Chair Cottrell and members of the board. I'm going to do a presentation, yeah. Before I get started with the crop report, I do want to do a presentation for the winner of our crop report cover contest. I believe we have a member of the Farm Bureau who's here today? No? Okay. All right, so I would like to bring up Julian Pineda.
Great, and can you tell us your name?
Oh, I'm sorry.
No problem.
I'm Tuesday Malito. I'm the Assistant Agricultural Commissioner Sealer.
Wonderful, thanks for being here.
Yes, okay. Come on up. So for the past, for the past 20 years, Napa County Farm Bureau's Ag in the Classroom Program has generously sponsored the Crop Report Cover Art Contest, engaging middle and high school students in a creative exploration of agriculture's vital role in our local economy. The first place winner this year is Julian Pineda. Julian loves to play soccer and practices whenever possible. Each summer, Julian plays recreational soccer for Solano Surf and enjoys indoor soccer during the winter. When not in the field, Julian spends his free time drawing and painting with mediums like colored pencils, watercolors, and charcoal. Julian may pursue an art career in the future. So as you can see, she, you had it up on the board, but this is the cover. So this is Julian. So congratulations, Julian.
I think we should give Julian a round of applause.
I do want to note, there is a monetary prize with this. The county and the Farm Bureau have generously donated the money for the prize. Farm Bureau's not here today, but the check will be mailed to Julian, so.
Great, yeah, Julian, would you mind if we took a picture with you? Okay, we can all hold this. So we'll be...
Yeah, yep. Do you want to hold one? Yes. Yes. Thank you.
All right, so now we get to the report itself.
Yes. Good morning Chair Cottrell and members of the board. My name is Tuesday Malito. I'm the Assistant Agricultural Commissioner Sealer. Tracy sends her regrets as she is at the Annual Commissioner Sealer Conference in Southern California this week. So this is her favorite thing to do, so she's very upset she's missing it. It is my pleasure to present the 2024 Napa County Agricultural Crop Report to you today. As mandated by the Food and Agricultural Code, this report offers a comprehensive overview of the state of agriculture within our county and is submitted annually to both the Board of Supervisors and the Secretary of Food and Agriculture. Within these pages, you will find detailed information regarding acreage, production, and the economic value of our agricultural commodities. Furthermore, the report outlines the diligent efforts undertaken in pest eradication, management, and control, as well as our ongoing pest exclusion activities. We also include other pertinent information reflecting the work we do in Napa County. This year marks the 103rd year we have produced a crop report. This is a testament to our longstanding commitment to documenting the evolution of our agricultural sector, dating all the way back to 1921. So as I said, we had a crop report cover contest. Julian was our winner. Our second place winner is Amaya Capriola. And then our third place winner is Violet Grove. The county's Farm Bureau Ag in the Classroom Program has fostered creativity and agricultural awareness by generously sponsoring the Crop Report Cover Art Contest for middle and high school students. This is a wonderful partnership with the Farm Bureau that we deeply value. So here are the top three prizes. So the first prize was awarded to Julian for his piece titled Heart of Napa. Second prize went to Amaya Capriola for Olive Branch at Sunset. And third prize was awarded to Violet Grove for Calistoga Life Cycle. For the past few years, the county has proudly matched the prize amounts generously donated by the Napa County Farm Bureau, resulting in winnings of $500, $300, and $200 for first, second, and third place respectively. We hope this serves as an even greater incentive for our talented middle and high school students to participate in next year's program. Turning now to overall agricultural production value for 2024, we observed a 14.3% decrease in value. The total ag production value reached $1,344,798,400 in 2024, compared to the record-breaking $1,207,919,300 in 2023. While this represents a notable decrease from the previous years, it is important to highlight that this figure still stands as the third highest value ever recorded for Napa County. Interestingly, when we come up, and when we examine individual crop categories, we see a more nuanced picture. Two-thirds of our crops experienced an increase in value, including vegetable crops, field crops, livestock, and poultry and animal products. The other one-third saw a decrease in value, which is the fruit and nut crop and the floral and nursery products. Focusing on wine grapes, our largest commodity, we saw a decrease in production acreage of 278 acres. The average yield also decreased to 3.2 tons per acre in 2024, representing a 13.3% decline. Total wine grape tonnage amounted to 147,182 tons, a 13.8% decrease from the 2023 harvest. Consequently, the total value of the 2024 wine grape harvest was $1.03 billion compared to $1.2 billion in 2023, a decrease of a little over $173 million, or 14.4%. in value, including vegetable crops, field crops, livestock, and poultry and animal products. The other one-third saw a decrease in value, which is the fruit and nut crop and the floral and nursery products. Focusing on wine grapes, our largest commodity, we saw a decrease in production acreage of 278 acres. The average yield also decreased to 3.2 tons per acre in 2024, representing a 13.3% decline. Total wine grape tonnage amounted to 147,182 tons, a 13.8% decrease from the 2023 harvest. Consequently, the total value of the 2024 wine grape harvest was $1.03 billion compared to $1.2 billion in 2023, a decrease of a little over $173 million or 14.4%. Despite this decrease, it is crucial to reiterate that the 2024 wine grape harvest still represents the third highest total value for record on Napa County. Furthermore, while the total tonnage was 13.8% lower than the previous year, it is still 0.8% higher than the 10-year average. While the olive fruit fly remained a concern, some growers reported less damage and higher yields per acre in 2024 compared to the previous year. However, the number of harvested acres reported was significantly lower, leading to a notable decrease in both total tonnage and overall value for olives. The highest-planted wine grape acreages remained consistent with last year, with Cabernet, Sauvignon, Chardonnay, and Merlot accounting for over 108,000 tons and occupying 34,016 bearing acres. These three varieties represent 74% of the total wine grape acreage and contribute to 81.7% of the wine grape's value. Let's take a moment to compare Napa's production with the state overall. Napa produced 7.87% of California's red wine grape total crush and 2.23% of California's total white wine grape crush. The top two producing varieties across the state were Cabernet Sauvignon and Chardonnay. Napa contributed 17.22% to California's Cabernet Sauvignon tonnage and 3.6% of California's Chardonnay tonnage. Throughout California, Cabernet Sauvignon had an average price per ton of $2,182 compared to Napa County's $9,146 per ton. That's a per-ton price 319% higher than the state's average. The average price per ton of Chardonnay throughout the state was $1,057 per ton. Napa County producers brought in $3,790 per ton. That's a 259% premium over the state average. Here's a few interesting additional facts. District 13, Eastern Central California region, had the largest share of the state's crush at 907,220 tons. The average price per ton in District 13 was $338.64. District 4, which is Napa County, received the highest average price at $6,938.96 per ton. And District 3, which is Sonoma and Marin County, received the second highest average price at $2,927.18 per ton. It's a clear testament to Napa County's legacy of excellence. In 2024, the floral and nursery industry experienced a decrease in both reported value and production area. Overall value declined by 37% to $95,700 compared to $151,900 the previous year, while production square footage slightly decreased to 273,790 square feet. This downturn is largely attributed to some producers reporting significantly lower values, impacting the overall figures despite steadily, steady activity among small-scale growers. We observed an increase in hay acreage as some vineyards were removed and replanted with hay and grasses. Growing conditions remained favorable, consistent with previous years, resulting in comparable yields per acre. Oat and grass hay values experienced a slight increase in price per ton, while rangeland acreage and values remained stable. Livestock production remained steady overall with strong market prices offsetting decreases in cattle and sheep production. Notably, cattle values rose due to strong demand and improved pricing despite a drop in production. Other livestock categories saw a modest change in value. An interesting trend we continue to see is the utilization of livestock for vegetation control in vineyards, which helps reduce the herbicide use, manages the open land, lowers the wildfire risk, and enhances overall wildfire resilience across the county. Napa County also experienced continued growth in the value of poultry and other animal products, such as goats, pigs, and piglets. Vegetable production in Napa County continued its upward trend in 2024, expanding to 21 acres with a total value of $646,200. This 35% increase from 2023's value, along with a rise in acreage, underscores the ongoing success of our local certified producers and the strong demand from restaurant markets for locally sourced vegetables. In 2024, we had 150 registered organic registrants, with some producing multiple commodities encompassing 7,702 production acres, the majority of which were wine grapes. Our office plays a crucial role in inspecting organic producers with less than $5,000 in annual sales on behalf of the California Department of Food and Agriculture. We also conduct spot checks and pesticide residue sampling at our local farmers' markets, ensuring the integrity of organic claims and verifying that commodities sold are indeed produced by the selling farmer. Recognizing the interconnectedness of our agricultural sector and our broader community, our annual report also addresses timely and significant issues. This year, we highlight the key findings of the Napa County Farm Worker Housing Needs and Impact Assessments Report, which is vital to understanding and addressing the challenges and opportunities facing our indispensable farm labor community. We extend our deepest appreciation to the Napa Valley Farm Worker Foundation, Napa Valley Community Foundation, the Housing Authority, City of Napa, Up Valley Family Centers, Napa County HHSA Public Health, Silverado Farming Company, the Gasser Foundation, and the Napa Housing Coalition for their remarkable work on this critical issue. And I just want to take one minute here to let you guys know that we do have a lot of those representatives here today. So personally, I wanted to thank you for your hard work. Right? Our report also includes a climate-focused article highlighting the ecological benefits of coastal fog and its vital significance to our local agriculture. Furthermore, we wish to recognize and honor Larry Bettinelli for his 15 years of dedicated service to the Napa County Wine Grape Pest, Wine Grape Pest and Disease Control District. I also want to acknowledge the recent retirements of two valued staff members. Candace Fisk, who dedicated over 30 years to Napa County, 25 of those were at the Agricultural Commissioner's Office, and Jake Blm, who served Napa County for five years as an Agricultural Waits and Measures Inspector. We extend our sincerest appreciation for their lasting contributions to the department. Pest exclusion remains our critical first line of defense against invasive pests and threatens our agriculture and environment. Our inspectors diligently inspect all plant materials entering Napa County for various pests, including the glassy wing sharpshooter. This year, we inspected over 2,500 plant shipments for glassy wing sharpshooter, with 614 originating from glassy wing infested regions and 1,886 from non-glassy wing regions. We also inspected 92 nursery shipments from out-of-state and five shipments of household items coming from the East Coast. In addition, we issued 27 phytosanitary certificates certifying agricultural commodities for international export from Napa. These shipments primarily consisted of winemaking-related materials, including barrels, staves, and woodchips, and were destined for eight different countries. The Napa County Agricultural Commissioner's Office proudly partners with California Dog Team Program, where trained canines like Canine Birdie assist in detecting unmarked shipments that could harbor invasive pests or plant diseases at parcel facilities, such as the U.S. Post Office, UPS, and FedEx. Our insect trapping program actively monitors urban, residential, and agricultural settings for invasive pests that pose a potentially devastating threat to crops, forests, and ornamental plants. If left unchecked, these pests could lead to millions of dollars in agricultural losses and an increase in pesticide use. Last season, sorry, last season, we trapped for a variety of pests, including the spotted lanternfly, European grapevine moth, as well as multiple species of invasive fruit flies. Overall, we had 6,259 insect traps placed throughout the county and conducted over 49,000 trap surfacings. Since 1915, Napa County Waits and Measures has been dedicated to ensuring fairness and accuracy in the marketplace for both consumers and businesses. Our Waits and Measures teams protect our community by inspecting and enforcing the accuracy of weighing and measuring devices. In 2024, our team of three inspectors conducted 15,331 inspections. This includes point-of-sale pricing accuracy, accuracy inspections in retail stores, fuel dispenser inspections at gas pumps, and numerous scale inspections, from small computing scales to large winery, vehicle, and cattle scales, as well as gas, electric, and water submeter inspections. I want to sincerely thank all of my staff who diligently worked on this report, especially Andre Napolotano, the project manager, who is here with me today, Terry Samansky, who processed the raw data, and Summer Woolley, who transformed the information into this stunning document. As always, physical copies of the crop report are available at our office, and the digital copy will be available on our website later today. Our Spanish version is currently in production and will be available online and in print within the next few weeks. Thank you for allowing me the opportunity to present this report today. Do you have any questions or comments for me?
Thank you so much for the presentation. You know, every year, this, just like Tracy Cleveland loves to present it, I think we love to hear it. It's got so much wonderful information, and the piece about the artwork is always a wonderful thing to highlight. I just want to compliment you this year too on telling not just a story of the crops, but some of the people behind the crops. And so congratulations to Candace Fisk and Jake Blm for their careers and their retirement, and great to see the recognition for Larry Bettinelli, and, and also just the fact that you've included so much about the Farm Worker Housing Needs Assessment. We loved that document when it came here, and it's so great to see that it has legs. So to Jennifer Palmer and your whole team, thank you for all your work there. So with that, I will open it up for public comment, actually, before we take questions from the board, in case anyone in the room wants to speak on this item. Everyone's taking, taking it all in, okay? No one on the phones. So I will ask for any questions or comments from the board. Supervisor Manfree.
Sure. I just want to acknowledge the incredible amount of work that goes into creating this amount of what is effectively field science. I mean, this is everything from, you know, when you, when you say, just for example, how many traps you have out or how many meters you've monitored, you know, this is like a daily grind that people are devoting so much energy to, and it's not just their personal energy, it's upkeeping the vehicles and making sure that all of your instruments are attuned and working. And, and then it's also crunching the data to turn it into this beautiful glossy report, which, you know, like just getting to this is such a heavy lift. And I just want to acknowledge all of the working pieces that are, are functioning together in this office to make this what it is, because it is truly remarkable. So thank you.
Thank you.
Great observation Supervisor Alessio.
Yeah, exactly what Supervisor Manfree, Manfree said. To get to this takes countless and countless and countless of hours of data collection, of bringing it together. So it's, we get the, we get kind of the, the tip of the, of the spear, if you will, or the iceberg. There's so much that goes on behind it and under it to get there. The numbers are incredible, as you, in terms of the inspections and the traps throughout there. I too did take an ag, was on the ag commission tour. I was so impressed with all the work and the, just the, the, was very, it was not that big of a team.
Yes.
There's a lot that you cover. And I was really fascinated by the ways and means. I, I, you know, that was very, very interesting. I think that knowing that this is the 103rd year presenting this report since 1921, I mean, that, that is quite a marvel in itself. And I agree that this really, this really is a testament to Napa County's legacy of excellence and along with our ag commission. I, you know, I, I do need to point out that seeing the, the decreased numbers of over 14% in terms of our wine industry, I acknowledge and recognize that we feel it, we, we are hearing about it and being watchful. I know it's over the history, it's still the third highest, but it's an alarming trend of, of it being decreased. And, you know, what we're seeing that are, that's outside of our control, such as tariffs and those other things, are going to have a great impact. And there's a ripple to that impact. Our wine industry gives so much back to our community, to our nonprofits, whether it be the farm worker housing or just a safety net, you know, resources that we have here through our nonprofits. So, you know, we'll just have to continue to have a watchful eye, to continue to collaborate. Thank you for bringing these numbers because it's helpful. We need to know the data. So thank you again for all the great work. Please extend that to your staff.
I will. Thank you.
Thank you Supervisor Alessio Supervisor Gallagher.
Yes, thank you so much for the report. It's beautiful. You know, I love the inclusion of the Farm Worker Housing Needs Assessment. To Chair Cottrell's point, we really appreciated getting that report, and I love that it's included here because this is a widely distributed report. A lot of people look at it, and it's a great opportunity for people to learn and understand the needs and conditions for our farm workers. So thank you so much for including that. I think, you know, in spite of the fact that it's a tough time in the industry, it's great to see that we have retained a very, very strong ag economy. And so thank you to everyone who makes that happen. And I think really my colleagues summed it up very well. So thank you so much for reporting today and on Tracy's behalf. You did a great job.
Thank you.
Thank you Supervisor Gallagher. So with that, we have no action item on that. Just one more thank you. Great to see this report, and we look forward to the one next year. And again, including the people of our agricultural industry, and this makes it a better document for sure. So thank you. I'm going to call for a 10-minute comfort break. We will come back here at 10:45. We will come back here at 10:45.
And as you can see from this, and I could go through everybody, the membership is quite diverse. We have the providers, we have the hospitals, we have the colleges' trainings. It's a good group of people, and you get input from all aspects for this committee. In terms of the systems of EMS, it's recognition that there's an emergency, the reporting of it, the response, the on-scene time, care and transit, and the transfer to definitive care. We break down all those components, and we're looking how we're doing in providing care in this community, and how we can improve in each one of those. You can see in ground ambulance operations, the number for last year. Obviously, AMR has the ALS contract, so that's where you're going to see your ALS calls. And the BLS calls are distributed with all the different agencies that have privileges here in Napa.
Can you just define, for folks who might be listening at home, the ALS and BLS?
Yeah. Advanced life support is you're going to have your paramedics, and they have their standing protocols. They were the ones that will start the IVs, intubate, things like that. Basic life support is your BLS ones, so that's your basic first aid with EMTs, and they don't have the advanced care to give. So, the 911 calls will all be the ALS calls. And then air ambulance operations, you can see the transports and the cancellations. We did start doing a dual dispatch on the aircrafts with CHP and REACH. That's why you're going to see a lot more cancellations, because we have two coming out. Whoever's closest, that's who's we're going to go ahead and go with. And then hands-only CPR is a huge thing. We really promote it. We do through the public information and education, through the fire departments, AMR, the hospital. We are out in the community as much as we can, in the schools. Now, it's 5th grade, 7th grade, and 9th grade with the hands-only CPR in the schools. There were 86 events last year with almost 7,000 people being trained in. I think we're even doing better this year. And cardiac survival rate. I think this is kind of bodes well with our big pushing on hands-only CPR and educating in our community, that we, our bystander CPR, we're looking at it, has dropped a little bit, and that's something we're really trying to focus on with all the education that we're doing. But even given that aspect, which is, like I said, we're really trying to focus on and improve on, the next slide. You can see that our survival rate is still better than the national average, and that's something we are a little competitive. We want to keep that, keep that number up. So, the more AEDs we can get out there, the more hands-only CPR, and people not being afraid to do CPR. We'll have those numbers continue to be better than the national averages, to hope. PulsePoint is an app that a lot of us have on our phone. We do promote it at the hands-only CPR events, where it, if you have it on your phone, if somebody had a full arrest, if I'm at Target and somebody goes down, they call 911. It will send the paramedics out immediately, but it will also ping around to see who's around that person. And, you know, I'm over in, you know, the sports department or something. It's going to ping me, somebody needs CPR, and I can go over there and start CPR, and I'll know where the AED is. So that's another thing that we're really trying to promote. And then, the current Napa counties that are heart-safe, American Canyon, Calistoga, and Napa, we're still trying to make this countywide, but there's a whole kind of criteria, and Sean probably could speak to a little bit more, of what you need to do to be a heart-safe community. But we're happy that these communities have met that standard. And then survivors reunion. This is near and dear to my heart. This is our 11th one. We had the little blip in the COVID years where we couldn't have it. These are our survivors from last year. It's fully funded by donations, by the stakeholders. We bring the, about five cases a year with the survivors and meet them with the person who did bystander CPR, the person, the dispatch, the first responders and the ED crew, and we reunite them. And it's just, it's a really moving experience. And tonight, we have, we have the event this evening, and it's going to, we put Kleenexes out on the table, because sometimes it can be emotional. Historically, it was covered by the Napa Register. The Press Democrat will be there tonight and covering it. And we're just really big on promoting, again, hands-only CPR, AED, and early 911's response to make these people, and more and more cases for our survivors. Oh, and our accompaniment. Thank you, you're already ahead of me. So, the Napa County Public Information and Education, or the PIE Committee, integrated Stop the Bleed and Narcan with administration training, with our Queen's Heart Safe Committee, and coalition with the QVMC Trauma Program, does a lot of Stop the Bleed, and the Napa Opioid Safety Coalition. Again, we extended the CPR from just, not only the 9th graders to the 5th and 7th graders, and they've been really responsive to that. It's been fun. And expanded AED placement. Napa County Sheriff's Office, American Canyon Police Department, and still trying to get more and more out there in the community. And our goals for this coming year, continuing to find the AEDs in this community. It's a little of a scavenger hunt sometimes. People will get them, and we're not aware of it, so we'll get them registered. So, they will be on PulsePoint. Expand the scope of the PIE Committee. More and more on the Stop the Bleed and the Narcan. Educate our community on the hands-only CPR and not being afraid to use the AEDs. Spoiler alert, an AED was used on one of our survivors that we're going to be talking about tonight out in the community. And that's a big, that's a big thing, to get people comfortable with that. And then collaborate with key community partners to encourage them to become a designated heart-safe community. That's St. Helena, Angwin, and Yountville. And with that, I will turn it over to Sean.
Thank you, Lois. So, before I get started, I just want to take a quick second to recognize this week is the 51st Annual EMS Week. Just to acknowledge the hard-working educators, dispatchers, EMTs, paramedics, firefighters, and law enforcement, and hospital personnel that work every day and dedicate themselves to this craft to ensuring the health and safety of our community. So, moving into this, a quick update on systems of care. And so, systems of care, when we look at it, we have these bundles of care that are very specialized. And so, you call 911 if you fit within this particular bucket. And the state of California defines four systems of care. Trauma, which is, you know, vehicle accidents, acts of violence, falls, et cetera. STEMI, or heart attack care, stroke care, and then EMSC, EMS for children. We don't have pediatric receiving centers in Napa County, so we don't have an EMSC currently. I'll say that for trauma care, the Queen of the Valley, we just renewed our agreement with them earlier this year. And the Queen of the Valley not only gets designated by the Napa County EMS Agency, but they're also validated and verified by the American College of Surgeons Committee on Trauma, which they were renewed in '23. And we should expect them in 2026 for their renewal for their Level 3 Trauma Center. In terms of heart attack care and STEMI care, we're very lucky. we're very lucky to have two STEMI receiving centers, both at Venice Health St. Helena and Queen of the Valley down here. And so it's rare to see 100% of your receiving centers within a county have the capability to receive a heart attack patient at any given time. Additionally, we also have two primary stroke centers. And so the American Heart Association and the Joint Commission defines three categories of stroke care. One is stroke-ready, one is primary stroke receiving center, and one is comprehensive, and comprehensive is really vast in the scope. But we have two primary stroke receiving centers in Napa County as well. And so we just recently renewed our agreement with Queen of the Valley for their stroke services, I think earlier this month or last month. And then we also, about a week or so ago, I believe, renewed our agreement with Adventist Health St. Helena for STEMI receiving centers. I'll also say that our, we have a requirement under state law to submit an EMS plan, a STEMI plan, a stroke plan, a trauma plan, a transportation plan, of which we just received approval for all of those plans as of, I believe, May 5th was the official date. And so we're, we're in good standing for another 12 months on that. Moving on to some of the system updates that we have going on. And so the Napa County EMS Symposium is something that we've been doing for approximately now four years. But in 2024, we held our third annual EMS Symposium, which is an opportunity for us to deliver education to our local responders, as well as a broader audience. And in 2024, we had close to 200 participants from 20-plus states, and we had a couple of international participants. And it's really important for us to give them the latest information and have a place to go to not only receive continuing education credits, but to also learn the latest information from leaders of the industry. And so we held our fourth annual just a couple of weeks ago, and bringing in experts in trauma care, bringing in experts in care for behavioral health response and responder self-care for opioid and substance use disorder, and a variety of topics, so that literature can be delivered to our responders in a timely manner. In addition to that, the, we have been working with the Napa County Sheriff and the Office of Emergency Services on developing a multi-casualty incident management training. And I just want to first thank Sheriff Ortiz and our Office of Emergency Services, Officer Bree Jones, for the work that they have done and financially supporting this, because this is a really important endeavor for us to ensure that when there is a large incident, we need to be able to care for those individuals on scene and get them to the right hospitals, because that's where we really fall into problems globally, is if we are not appropriately transporting and distributing these patients to where not overwhelming facilities. And so we had the opportunity to hold two tabletop exercises and a full-scale. And I'll say that the full-scale exercise, which was held on March 7th, is probably the largest full-scale EMS exercise that I've seen or heard of in my 20-plus years in EMS. And it was really exciting to see, and most importantly, is working on an after-action report to give us some good information, so we can make adjustments and changes to our system to ensure that we are prepared and ready for the actual event that comes to us. In addition to that, medical and health response planning. So just a background, the Office of Emergency Services has an emergency operations plan, and they have various annexes that are responsible for all kinds of things. Emergency Support Function 8 is public health and medical, and we have the responsibility to have response planning, not just from a, from an oversight perspective of assurances that we are meeting the medical and health needs during a disaster. We also have grant requirements. And so we're continually updating these response plans to ensure they're, one, in line with recent updates to the Napa County Emergency Operations Plan, but also our ongoing grant requirements to ensuring we're ready for the next COVID, or ready for the next event that has a significant impact to health and safety. Because even when you have large fires, and we may not be firefighters in EMS, but we do evacuate hospitals, and ensuring that we're prepared when we have to get 75 people out of St. Helena with about 20 minutes' notice, that we have the, the resources available and the decision trees to be successful in that. In addition to that, Tablet Command is a system that was brought on through your contract with American Medical Response, and they have an obligation to provide this tool, which is something that is relatively new within California, was initiated in Contra Costa. But it provides our fire service and our ambulance providers real-time information, location of units, information about calls that they can access at any given time. And I could pull it up on my tablet right now and tell you exactly how many 911 calls are in the system and what is going on with them. And so we've had, it's been a real game changer for situational awareness for us. And then finally, I'll talk about Health Information Exchange. And Health Information Exchange, as many of us know, electronic health records. We've really shifted from paper, from in the hospitals and the pre-hospital setting. But the connection between pre-hospital and hospital is, is difficult, because when you have two different languages talking to one another, it presents some challenges. So Health Information Exchange integrates those two different languages, so that we are not only giving records that can be consumable by our hospitals, but also provide outcome information to ensure that the care that we're providing in the pre-hospital setting is effective and actionable. And so we are the first county in California, and I know we only have two hospitals, but we are the first county in California to be fully connected to both, to all of our county hospitals, to our EMS system. We're able to have that full longitudinal record for those individuals. Moving into ambulance patient offload times. And ambulance patient offload times, I present this every year, but it's not a problem for us. Ambulance patient offload times is a problem around the state of California. It's been such a problem that there are working groups in the Assembly and the Senate. There has been legislation, AB 40 most recently went into effect, requiring some elements related to the ambulance patient offload time. And just the background, from the time the ambulance arrives to the hospital to the time the care is transferred to the emergency department, and they can be cleared and go out into the system. I always provide this data. The standard by, by state law that was implemented is 30 minutes. Napa County standard is 20 minutes. And you can see by the chart there, our four most common hospitals. We are well under the, our standard of 20 minutes. And our two local hospitals, the Queen of the Valley at 13 and Adventist Health St. Helena is at 10. So always happy to report some good numbers there. Moving into the ambulance services agreement. And for those of you, and I think actually everyone here wasn't, wasn't here in 2021 when we brought this. So in 2021, we brought a contract to the Board of Supervisors. This was a result of a two-year process. EMS system assessment, request for proposal, contract negotiations, everything going on while COVID was happening. So our contract commenced services on December 31st of 2021. And what it does is relies, it provides reliable emergency ambulance services throughout the county. And I'll say that it is going well. And so in Califor, in calendar year 2024, American Medical Response met all of their response time standards. And of the 17,377 calls they arrived on time 95.12% of the time. Here's a quick breakdown of them month over month. And you can see that that average of 95.12 exists. And the, I believe the lowest response time standard that they met was in April at 93.95%. So, and again, our standard is at 90%. Here's a broken down in a, in a little more granular detail in two zones. We have two zones and four priority categories for each. And so that blue line represents urban and suburban zones. The green line represents the rural and wilderness zones, and that red line represents the standard. And you can see that the entire calendar year, American Medical Response met all of their response time requirements. I believe last year in a board meeting, I was asked to bring trends over time. And so I wanted to bring that same graph and represent it from 2016. And so taking a step back, 2022 would be the first year of the new contract. But I wanted to at least represent, so we had some ongoing data to show that our contractor, which has been American Medical Response, in the old contract and the new, has continued to meet all of their response time requirements. So I say response time requirements, and it was previously the only metric that we were successful at measuring. Because we knew what time somebody called 911, we knew what time an ambulance arrived at the residence or at the location of the call. Prior to 2016, we didn't have standardization in EPCR records, NEMZES, which is a standard. Since that implementation, we have an opportunity to actually test the care that is being provided on scene, which is arguably the most important metric for what we're seeing from the research of physicians around the country. So we established seven metrics. We establish these metrics to ensure not only clinical care, but contract compliance. And I believe this is the first time I'm bringing our clinical metrics to the board. And so we measure N tidal CO2 on cardiac arrests, treatment of certain low blood sugar, of certain elements of heart attack, stroke patients, et cetera. And so we break this down into these graphs. And so the red error bars that are on there are representing the standard. And so we have variability in the standard, what, in some cases, we think 85% is reasonable. In some cases, we think 95% is reasonable. And you can see in the calendar year 2024, American Medical Response met all of their clinical compliance standards. And so we're really happy to be moving forward with this. And again, another thing that Napa County is at the forefront on, we were the first county in the state of California to implement clinical compliance standards. And I have meetings on a regular basis with other counties that are wanting to know how we're operationalizing this. And so it's really cool to see us evolve as a EMS community. With that, thank you so much, and happy to take any questions.
Great, thank you very much for the report. It's always great to get the update. And I sit on the Emergency Medical Care Committee as the board rep, and I just want to say it's always great to go to the meetings. I know we have the medical director here today. And to hear that people are always bringing things forward about research that you've seen in the field and potential improvements. And you called out the Public Information and Education Group, and they're always looking at how to get education better to people. That statistic about moving to a younger population to be able to teach 5th graders and up, rather than just 7th graders and up, I think that's very meaningful. One of the things they found was that 5th graders are really engaged. And by the time the kids are a little bit older, maybe not so engaged. So just things like that, I, I think that's great to see that's happening on an ongoing basis. I had two questions for you, Lois. One's, one about the cancellation graph. You mentioned that there are now, for every call, there's two helicopters going out, which means there's a higher rate of cancellation. So I'm guessing it makes sense that we want to get someone there as soon as possible. And, you know, what, how do we allocate resources on that one?
I can cover that. So we have what's called auto-launch. Auto-launch is a set of criteria based on your geographic location crossed with the determinate code. And when I say determinate code, when you call 911, you get questions from the dispatcher, and it takes them down an algorithm. You're, you end up in a cardiac arrest, or you end up as a difficulty breathing, or you end up as a unknown trauma. We have, we established it back in 2016, an intersection between these determinate codes and a geographic location. We have two different types of ships in, in Napa County. We have Copter 11, which is under the REACH Aeromedical Services, which is in a public-private partnership with American Canyon Fire Protection District. We also have the California Highway Patrol ALS Air Rescue. They're different levels. So whereas the California Highway Patrol has a pilot and a paramedic, and they're both law enforcement, REACH or Copter 11 has a pilot, a nurse, and a paramedic. And so just having that additional practitioner in the back is really beneficial to those patients, having an extra set of hands. And so when we look at auto-launch criteria, we tend to favor the air ambulance. We want to make sure that we're getting the highest level of care there. Within the auto-launch criteria, we've established this delta of time. And so within the policy, that if the ALS Air Rescue is 20 minutes faster than the air ambulance, we send the ALS Air Rescue, because we know that time is extremely important. And so in some cases, Copter 11 could be on an interfacility transport to children's. And so in order for us to know what that delta is, we need to alert both. And so what we were doing for years is we realized that we weren't alerting both. We were just alerting REACH, and then we, and then CHP was coming up on the air, and they had to do some affirmative action. And so when we started bifurcating that to alert both of them, they both show up as a, as a computer-automated dispatch event. And so now we've seen this higher cancellation, which we saw in 2023, was as a result of that work. And we're, we're trying to distill it down as to how we can represent it in a more realistic way. But it's, it seems for us, in terms of being accurate with the data, that that jump is going to exist in the graph.
Got it. So just to understand that graph a little bit more, is that showing, is a cancellation necessarily showing a takeoff?
Not necessarily.
Okay, okay.
They may not even spin the rotors up.
Right, so that's what I'm getting at.
Yeah, okay.
Great, thank you. Supervisor Alessio.
Oh, my light was on, okay, great. Well, I want to say something I didn't realize. Thank you so much for this report. It's great to see you both. There was upon a time I got to sit together with these two phenomenal folks here who work so hard for our community, keeping people safe. It's great to be on the side and to receive such a great report and see the difference. There's been a lot of progress since I was at Queen of the Valley Community Outreach, and it's exciting. A couple of questions on the, the cardiac arrest survival bystander CPR. It looks like the response, it looks like our numbers have dropped a little bit in '23 and '24 in particular compared to nationwide. Is there, do you, do you know what the, what, why that might be?
We don't. And with all the, from what we're understanding, there's people are just, there's a little bit more hesitancy. We don't know if it's post-COVID or what, but there's more hesitancy. And that's where we're hoping to get out, not only the kids with the hands-only CPR, but, you know, Queen, we're going to the farmer's markets. We're just trying to do stuff and just get it out there. I have my mannequins, and I do the golf tournament every year. I do the first aid tents there. And I said, well, if we're going to do that, we're going to teach everybody hands-only CPR. If you come by any of the ones that Queen's at, you'll see Band-Aids across the mouth to let people know they don't have to give mouth-to-mouth, it's only compressions. And so we're really, we, we don't know. We're really trying to figure out why we had that little dip and do our best to make sure that next year when we report, the numbers back up there. But that's, it just seems like there's more hesitancy of people to actually do it, even though the education's getting out there.
Okay, so the, the outreach and education has not changed. There's not a different staffing.
It's increased, it's increased.
It's actually increased, but okay. Well, that is interesting. So let's hope for next year, we, we get that number back up. I can't say enough about Pulse Point and how important that is, that everybody has that app. So double-check and make sure you have Pulse Point. There's, I remember at one point, there was a couple of different Pulse Points, or some confusion around which Pulse Point is the, is the one that's for this program? Has that been an issue at all, or has that been resolved?
We, we have a Pulse Point for the AED identifier. The red Pulse Point is what is the Pulse Point responder that, that folks want. It's one says Pulse Point AED, and one says Pulse Point. And so just looking for that one. And when we do our outreach, when we go into farmer's markets and all of, all of those community events, we provide a QR code for people to scan, so they can go directly to that. But agreed, it's having two different apps for the same concept.
It can be confusing, yeah, we want to make sure we have the right one on that. And I have to chuckle a little bit, there was still, they're trying to find all the AEDs. I think that's going to be a never-ending job. But folks, please, if you have an AED in your organization, company, please let us know, so we can include them on this, you know, in our, in our database, if you will. I definitely want to encourage Napa County to continue to work towards being a heart-safe community. It's very proud and the city of Napa accomplished that. So I think we can accomplish that too. I know there's certain steps towards that. The, what else did I want to talk about? Oh, the, the AMR. I remember when this was, I don't know how long ago, that we went from Piner's to AMR, but that was a huge community debate. AMR has really proven to be a great partner in this. And I tell you, I'm really excited to see, and congratulations on the Health Information Exchange. I mean, I don't use the word huge very often for certain reasons, but it's huge. That's really big, congratulations on that.
Thank you, and I take zero credit. The, the credit goes to the hospitals and their legal departments, their IT departments, and American Medical Response. I get to report it out and rest on their laurels, but it's, it is really exciting to see. So thank you.
Thank you. In terms of my, my last question, and then is really on this, it's towards the end of your presentation on the compliance overview. And again, it's with AMR, so again, with all appreciation with AMR and the great work and going above the standard. And when I look at the chart, it shows 2016, especially in the urban. urban suburban zone, is higher than it is. Now, I mean, we're talking 95% over 96, 96.5%. But we haven't been able to reach quite that height. It looks like 2016 was also, um, a stellar year, um, for the rural area. Um, slight numbers, it looks a bit more significant on the graph, just based at the, the numbers on the graph. But any thoughts on that in terms of the, the compliance overview?
Yeah, I mean, I think the, the signs of a healthy system is, obviously, you want to make sure that they're above the, the compliance standard. And so the one that we said is at 90, 90%, which is a gold standard around California. Um, we continue to work with them to make those incremental changes and, and recognizing there's always variability and room for error and, and things. Um, but, uh, they are, uh, they've, they've made multiple steps. So in the beginning of the contract, we had a couple of implementation challenges, um, in, in the first month. They made adjustments to their deployment plan to ensure that they're increasing their compliance, um, over time. And I just, I don't know if we'll ever get to 100% um, within those areas, but, um, they've continued to, to meet the standard that we set for them.
Thank you. And then last, um, in terms of the survivors' union, which I know is a really heartfelt union, Lois, I know how much this means to you too. Um, are you able, since not, the general public is not able to attend, to give us just kind of, um, the five incidents, emergency incidents that will be recognized? Are you able to give that? Or do you, just so we know, or the public knows?
Um, well, we, we, we do afterwards. We try to keep it kind of, but we do have one trauma and we have four cardiac arrests.
Okay.
That and, um, three of the patients came to Queen of the Valley and two to St. Helena Hospital. Um, and we do try to keep it kind of, um, of surprise for.
Okay, so I don't want to spoil the surprise. Okay.
Call me tomorrow. I'll tell you all about it.
Okay, very good.
I don't even know who they are.
Okay, well, very, very good. And again, that's a great, um, segue just to thank, uh, Queen of the Valley and St. Helena Hospital and all our healthcare providers, including our first responders and emergency response team and the both of you and your departments for the great work. Thank you.
Thank you. Yeah, great work. And it's always wonderful to have the presentation. One piece I would love to see, I know we talk a lot about standards and, and you are so well-versed in what they are. It would be great to have a, a slide that reminds us what the standards are, right? Because I know we have different required response standards based on where people are in the county. And because we have so many different pockets in the county, that would be helpful next time too. So, um, but this is terrific and, great to hear how, how positive that multi-casual training, multi-causality training went as well. Um, so with that, I will go ahead and ask if there's any public comment in the room or on the phones for this item? Okay. Again, thanks so much for coming and, and helping us understand how things are going at the EMS.
The question?
Oh, yes, of course. Sorry.
Thanks so much. And Sean, I just wanted to ask, and this may be more for OES in the next presentation, but, um, you talked about COVID. And, um, so I'm wondering a little bit more about pandemic planning, response, and long-term recovery. Um, so if you can speak to that, or, you know, I know Bree might be able to speak to that as well.
Yeah, so I'll let Bree cover the recovery components of this because it, it kind of all rolls up. And depending on the, there is, there is uniqueness to the different types of events in terms of recovery, but recovery in and of itself is, is about the community getting back. But in terms of the response, preparedness, mitigation, um, uh, Public Health Works every day, I'll just cover mitigation on the disease, disease control, et cetera, et cetera, on, on pandemic, um, preparedness. Um, in terms of, uh, preparedness stuff, uh, within public health, we focus on, on a regular basis on developing these plans. We, uh, exercise those plans through these smaller flu clinics, and we do after-action reports, um, and continually approve our approach to that. Um, our emergency operations plan, our, our, it's an annex to the, the county emergency operations plan, uh, addresses all things public health and medical and including pandemics. And, um, we had, uh, unfortunately, an opportunity to get, uh, well-versed in pandemic response. And so we immediately captured that information. And I think it was actually a grand jury recommendation back in 2021, um, that we have a COVID response, uh, plan. Um, we don't, you know, COVID in and of itself as a, a novel virus is probably never going to happen again, but we can take those lessons learned. And we've adopted all of that and not just having a COVID-19 response plan, but having a pandemic response plan so that we know those steps in the early days for mitigation. We know those steps in the early days for getting testing. Uh, we know those steps in the earlier days for, um, masking guidance, et cetera, et cetera. And so we've captured all of that into our response planning to ensure that if tomorrow something happens, um, we at least have a blueprint and a roadmap to, to be successful in response.
Okay, thank you so much.
You bet.
Thanks to you both.
Thank you.
All right, we will go ahead and move on to our next item, which is, um, 11E, where we will receive a presentation on Napa County's post-disaster recovery planning. Good morning, Sheriff and Ms. Jones.
We have somebody zooming in as well, hopefully, from Sense Makers. Okay. Good morning, Chair Supervisors. Um, so we're here, and I say that with a sigh because, about a year and a half ago, um, to use a term from Mr. Tudor, when I was given another hat as Deputy Director of Emergency Services, uh, for CEO AllSOP, um, one of the things that, um, was already being worked on, and I wanted to kind of get before you was today. And so apologize, it's taken a year and a half. It's been pretty challenging. Um, but we, the goal of today, what we're, the action we're seeking today is, um, really some, uh, some direction on the draft, um, and some things that maybe, uh, you like or don't like before we bring it to you as part of, uh, the, this draft is ultimately going to be finalized and be an annex to the Napa County Emergency Operation Plan. So we hope to bring you the EOP, uh, later this summer. And then this document before you today, uh, in draft form is really, um, going to be an annex to that larger EOP. Along with other annexes, um, talk about pandemic response annexes. The cities will have an annex in the countywide. Uh, we're fortunate, working, uh, closely with our city partners in the EOP, is a countywide EOP, which each city having an annex in it. So that's, um, that's something we're, we're fortunate to have in a small community that we are in Napa County. Um, so, uh, with that, I'm, I'm very ha- happy that we're finally here before you and to, to go over, um, the, the Recovery Operations Plan. We are required, as you may know, to submit and to have on file with the state, a county EOP. There is no such requirement for an ROP, a Recovery Operations Plan. Um, however, the county, uh, started this, uh, idea of having an, an ROP. Um, they're rare, they're becoming more popular. So I don't want to say we're in front or we're cutting edge, but we're certainly where we should be. Um, I think it's a good idea. As you know, as a, as a 30 years as a first responder, um, you know, I feel pretty good about the response side. The word recovery, um, honestly, is, is a foreign language sometimes to us first responders. Um, it comes more to the, you know, the accounting, the public works, the recovering dollars, and getting our community back on its feet after a disaster. So this is a, a great idea. It gives, um, staff in the future, uh, a book on the shelf to, to kind of a playbook of how do we, how do we get Napa County back on its feet after a disaster. So it, it is a good idea to have a Recovery Operations Plan. And I'm excited that today finally came where we can bring you this. And we look forward to bringing you the EOP with this as an annex in final form, uh, later this summer. With that, I will turn it over, introduce, uh, so one of the things we did is we got, uh, we did some of the work in the front. And then, uh, as part of our consulting contract for our EOP with Sense Makers and Associates, uh, we amended our contract for that consulting contract to have them kind of get it across the finish line and, and finalize the, the ROP as an annex. So I want to introduce, uh, Representative from Sense Makers, uh, Mike Cooper, who's on Zoom.
Yeah, good morning, everyone. Uh, great pleasure to be with you today and, and talk a little bit about the great work that the Office of Emergency Services, that the sheriff has done, um, in preparing this plan. As the sheriff mentioned, this is, um, very much a leaning forward in the process. I can say as, as someone who works in multiple counties throughout California, that, um, Napa is one of the only ones to have a Recovery Operations Plan. And, and I think that speaks to the commitment that the Office of Emergency Services has, as well as the, um, commitment to the community as well as a whole. Really, folks, um, what I'm going to talk about very briefly is just to kind of go through the background of the plan, kind of the process that was taken to put the plan together and, um, the different components that went into that plan, and then talk a little bit about the stakeholders that were engaged in that plan. Uh, I think everybody knows that when building a, a disaster management-type plan, it's very, very important that, uh, we include all of our relevant stakeholders. We hear from everybody from their perspective and, uh, understand exactly, you know, what it is that they need in the process. So, um, as the sheriff talked about, the Recovery Operations Plan is a very critical component of the County Emergency Operations Plan. Disaster Management is spread across four phases. Um, the last of those phases being recovery. So it's very, very important. That said, disaster recovery is an incredibly broad idea and concept that encompasses a lot of different programs and regulations and systems and processes up and down the government scale. So the intent really of putting the plan together was to provide a way for the county and our operational area stakeholders to organize around the concept of disaster recovery and implement a variety of those different things, um, in the recovery to a major disaster. The plan itself isn't necessarily a how-to at every step. What it is, is a framework for those operations. Um, and you can see there, the, the three steps that we took in developing the plan, we started by looking at what was available locally in, in different documents, uh, different subject matter expertise throughout the county, and then engaging those key stakeholders there locally. Uh, we talked to 15 different groups. Uh, we had 10 stakeholder meetings where we collected information, collected data for the plan. Um, I should note that included in those agencies was the Napa Valley Coad, which is the Community Organizations Active in Disaster, who play a tremendous role in disaster recovery, uh, specifically in bridging, um, the public sector recovery and the individual or the, um, you know, citizen-type recovery. I received more than 60 comments on the plan that we integrated. And then there in our third step, we moved through several layers of review and, um, incorporation of feedback, starting there at the Office of Emergency Services, moving through the sheriff's office, and obviously now with the board. Uh, very, very important to have those multiple levels of review of the plan, uh, to ensure that it's inclusive, to ensure that it, it is, um, usable there in the county and the operational area. Uh, there on the screen, you can see the, the different agencies that, again, participated in that annex development. We spoke with representatives of each one of these agencies, often multiple times, and again, worked the draft, worked the data through those agencies to ensure that it included their input, their perspective, and, uh, was realistic and usable for them in their role. I should note at this point, folks, that every one of those agencies listed on the screen, uh, has a role in disaster recovery. Now, that role may, may change dependent on the type of disaster, but it's important to note that there's a lot of folks that go into disaster recovery. It's not one place, one agency. It's, it's a, a broad swath of agencies, a broad swath of stakeholders.
Good morning. Um, so the next slide will show you, um, an adaption from FEMA on the Recovery, um, Continuum. So here in Napa County, we've adopted this, um, for the Recovery Plan. So preparedness is obviously ongoing. Napa County Office of Emergency Services, the sheriff's office, um, public health, uh, law enforcement, you know, fire, everybody is focusing on that preparedness aspect. Um, and preparedness for recovery is very difficult, which is why we bring in some of the partners at Napa Valley Coad to fill in those gaps, um, especially in CVNL as well. So in short term, um, we have, those are the days to weeks after. Obviously, it's going to be disaster-dependent, um, whether you think of a fire, a pandemic. The short term is when the EOC is, is activated. We're focusing on the response. But recovery begins in the response phase. Um, there's many reasons for that, but CALOES and FEMA want like IDs, so, um, damage assessment reports within 72 hours after disaster. That's why recovery begins during that response phase. Through this planning process, we recognized early on that we should actually have the recovery coordinator come into the EOC during that response phase. So that's something that we did change our EOP. It is a, a new position, but is on our EOC roster. As we transition from that short term to that intermediate, that's when we will begin looking at opening up the ROC, so the Recovery Operations. Um, and then when, once we go to long-term recovery, we may not necessarily need to be in the same room like an EOC or an ROC, but there's ongoing projects. That could be public works projects that stay open for many years, could go through multiple appeal processes. But then also, that's where Coad steps in, and you have some of that community-led engagement for that long-term recovery.
So is, turn my microphone back on. As, uh, Ms. Jones mentioned, uh, recovery starts right out of the gate. And it's, you know, just one of those lessons learned. Um, we have the, uh, you know, in a wild land fire, which is what everybody, front of everybody's mind nowadays, but we have to worry about earthquakes and floods and all kinds of disasters. But one of the lessons learned, um, in, in the response side is the sooner you start thinking about recovery, the, the better recovery goes, and we can get the community back on its feet. Um, so we've, uh, we, the EOP you'll be getting later this summer will have, as, as Ms. Jones mentioned, that position right out of the gate, right out of the response. If we can get, um, you know, the, the operation sections, um, operationalizing those, those damage assessments, um, the documentation team to get the documents that we need so we can put in our papers to FEMA or to, or to CALOES sooner, then we bring those dollars in sooner, we bring those resources in sooner to get Napa County back on its feet. Using that same kind of, uh, what we're used to, which is an EOC, uh, we're unfortunately well-practiced in it in Napa County, um, using that same infrastructure and that same mechanism, um, and just transitioning at some point beyond, you know, once the, once the fire's out, if you will, um, and then transitioning to an ROC, um, and then using those, those, um, similar organizational chart with a little bit of different nuance to it because we're talking about recovery. Um, we, uh, in, in the current roster, um, the undersheriff would kind of manage the room, uh, in an EOC response. And then as we get into medium and long-term recovery, and the initial response is winding down, then we would transition command of, of the EOC, uh, to a different position depending on the disaster, um, but a position from the CEO's office, uh, because there would be a lot of resources needed, um, that aren't necessarily in the sheriff's house, right? There's resources from HHSA or from Public Works. Um, so really it's more appropriate for, um, for a different person representing the overall county CEO, uh, to take the lead in that room. Uh, and then as it get into long-term and we start talking individual assistance and, uh, disaster casework, um, then we will start to transition that to our community-based organizations, leaning heavily on the Coad in our example here in Napa County, Napa Valley Coad, um, to, uh, to get that long-term recovery going. Um, so a lot of the areas that, uh, that you may have questions about in recovery are, are going to really land in one of the, uh, Recovery Support Functions, or RSFs, um, in the red boxes there. Um, so, um, take for example, uh, I know Supervisor Cottrell and I have had some conversations about debris, debris removal. Depending on that debris, it could fall in, in several of those red boxes and all of them. It just depends on what the debris is or what the disaster is. It could be hazardous materials, which would land in, in one box, or it could just be, uh, just plain waste. So, uh, so those are, those are part of the conversations. But again, I think the, to emphasize that, um, every disaster is going to be nuanced and different and unique. It's got its own fingerprint. So, next slide.
I was just going to add, um, yes, for the debris, it could be in many different areas. If we're in the Recovery Operations for a pandemic, we most likely don't have debris. But the reason why debris management is not called out, um, as a section here on, which is the ICS, so the Incident Command System, it follows the EOC like the sheriff had mentioned, but this one follows Recovery Support Functions. Um, we will build that out as needed, dependent on the disaster. We will know at that point. And again, it begins in that response phase. We'll actually rely a lot on that Recovery Coordinator to help build out the positions that are needed. Um, if debris is needed, the reason it can fall in many different boxes is it could be that technical assistance, which would be under that community assistance on, um, private property debris. It could also be in Health and Social Services because the public health officer actually has to initiate that for hazardous materials. So that's why it's in a couple of different boxes. And then we also have an annex that will be presented with our EOP just for debris management. Okay, so the next is roles and responsibilities. Okay, so the next is roles and responsibilities. This is a continuation of the last conversation, but as the recovery coordinator will have a position in the EOC, we will build those out. We rely a lot on the entire county, so every department in recovery. And again, for a lot of those projects and long-term recovery, which we're still on, that, where the sheriff said that we rely a lot on the CEO's office, we actually work with Becky on signing a lot of those. So there's a difference between the undersheriff on some of the response grants that I do and some of the work that's done in that response phase versus the recovery. So we kind of keep that a little bit separate because those projects all fall under Public Works, which is some of that long-term recovery. And then Coad obviously takes over that community aspect. So as we build out those RSFs, the roles and responsibilities will be built out as well. It's back to you, Mike.
Yeah, thanks. So as I talked about at the outset, there's a broad concept associated with disaster recovery and there's many different programs and systems and processes, many different agencies as you ascend the government ladder there, involved in that. So what we endeavor to do with the plan is provide some attachments, not overload the plan with forms and graphics and things like that, but provide some attachments as references that can be quickly accessed as needed. So some of those topics include overviews on the FEMA public and individual assistance programs, which are two different programs in the overall concept. Disaster programs from the Small Business Administration and the Department of Agriculture, as well as some guidance on long-term recovery planning. Again, all this information exists somewhere. And rather than weigh down the annex with, you know, redundancies, we felt it better and sheriff and OES agreed that let's reference these and make them accessible quickly for those who need to implement the plan. I should say that included in those are links, URLs to those attachments that so they can be quickly accessed, again, wherever they live in their normal day-to-day existence. Next slide, please. And again, just kind of continuing with that thought. The next step in the preparedness cycle, as Bree talked about at the beginning, is training. So we have our planning, the next step is training. So we've also provided two dozen training courses associated with disaster recovery, again, covering a broad swath of topics from debris, individual assistance, public assistance, a lot of the different nuanced type programs within disaster recovery. We wanted to provide those as part of the annex, again, so that it could be a usable document for the stakeholders in the operational area in the county. And then some templates for action planning. There's a sample post-disaster recovery ordinance. That's not a have to, that's a maybe if we need to, depending on the disaster. But again, wanted to provide that sample. And then some long-term recovery items for the Coad and some debris management guidance from CAL OES, which is the next step from the county on the emergency management system. So. Bree, I'll turn it back to you.
Yeah, I want to thank Sense Makers and I want to thank our community partners, all the stakeholders that participated and gave up some of their time to come up with this. It is kind of a, again, it's like opened with, it is exciting to finally be here. I honestly wanted to be here much, much sooner, but a lot of challenges along the way. This is kind of a novel idea, so we wanted to get this to you in draft form to get some feedback before we bring it to you for adoption. I also, I want to thank our partners, our non-government partners that participated in this process, specifically in Napa Valley Coad. I want to thank everybody, including prior OES employees who started this project. Ms. Kendra Boyer kind of kicked it off a couple of years back. And also, you know, as we're looking at drafts, because and with every response, there's lessons learned and then we update the EOP on how we respond to things because we're learning. And that's, it's the same in this recovery world with every recovery, there's lots of lessons learned. So bringing on the consultant was very helpful because they bring lessons learned from hurricanes in Florida or tornadoes in the Midwest as well. So we're able to have those kind of bounce those ideas. And specifically, I did ask in one of the early drafts, can we put in this document resources of training for people? Because as I opened with, response is kind of a new, or a response is something I feel pretty comfortable with. Recovery is very new for first responders, for traditional first responders. So our folks were very responsive and identified several training opportunities to make a part of this plan as part of the attachments. So I want to thank them for adding that to the plan. With that, I know Bree did a lot of work, as well as Angel back at the office. And I want to, we're here to take notes and take some direction before we bring it to you later this summer as an annex to the overall EOP. So with that, I'll open up and happy to answer any questions and take any direction.
Great. Thank you both. First of all, I just want to share with my colleagues that, you know, so we're being asked for direction and comment feedback today. I'm going to suggest we keep it high level. We can dive into it and I'm hoping you guys will be open for, you know, future feedback too. So I encourage folks to go through the document and share more details too. I do just want to take a moment to thank the sheriff. I know this has been a process that you wish had gone more quickly. This is an incredible document. And this, you know, having kind of reviewed some of the earlier drafts with you, I think the path that you took the county down to get here was worth it. So thank you for that and thank you, Ms. Jones. Because what I have been interested in all along is something that gives the community some, like you said, a framework. We don't know exactly what the next disaster will look like or what will be required, but to have some of this stuff already laid out, the lines of communication, the collaboration with varying department heads and departments and our nonprofit partners, that's already baked into this document. So I think that's really helpful going forward because those will be challenging times. So the more that we can say, hey, we already know who's on the team. We don't know exactly what their job is going to be. But I think that's really important. And it's great to hear about the recovery coordinator getting added into the EOC. That makes a ton of sense. And then, see, the other thing I wanted to call out, again, makes sense that you don't need a line item for a debris removal. What you need is something that says recovery support functions to be determined. So those are just some high-level thoughts. Supervisor Gallagher, I know your light is on.
Thank you. I just wanted to ask if, I think my comments have to do with maybe looking for some additional standalone annexes. So what's the process for that? Or can we give you our, you know, our comments and our ideas around that? For example, I think you mentioned a pandemic response annex. And is that possible then to write something up that's more of a deep dive for pandemics, for example?
For the recovery side of pandemics?
Yes.
So the recovery side for pandemics, that's something that Sean kind of mentioned. That would be the public health side of it. Certainly in the ROC, if there was like an economic or a community assistance, that would be built out in that ROC. The long-term recovery from pandemics is already specified in their planning.
Okay. And is that also through public health, the basically like the disaster response plan overall in terms of responding to pandemics? And preparing for? Because I'm looking for everything along the continuum.
Yeah, I think preparedness would also kind of fall into their arena, but we have the pandemic response plan in our EOP.
Right. That's great.
Supervisor Gallagher, I'd share with you, when we stand up at EOC, one of the branches in the section, there's, you know, there's the EOC, there's the sections, in the operations section, there's the different branches, law branches, one of them. Another one is medical health. So as an example, from COVID-19, as you can imagine, that was a very, very busy branch, right? As to, you know, to call out a recent tragedy, we all saw in the news in Palm Springs, I would imagine the law enforcement branch in that EOC is very, very busy because that's that disaster. But in the pandemic, we not only had a lot of the medical professionals helping us with the operations side in the EOC for the pandemic, but then we had a fire and we had to evacuate a hospital.
Right.
And so that branch and Sean Vincent, as the branch director at that time, was successful at finding beds, comparable beds for the patients and evacuating them in a hospital. So there is an entire branch dedicated to the medical health side of any response, earthquake, pandemic, fire, flood.
Right. Thank you. And I think I need to probably also just ask public health more about the preparedness side in terms of looking at the next pandemic, you know, in terms of our preparation piece, whereas it looks like you're all dialed in together around the response side. And I think the only other thing I wanted to say was, I like that it's recognized in terms of vulnerable populations. In the, you know, I thought that was great to call that out in the planning assumptions. And I just want to continue as developing that in terms of putting that attention on equity. And I don't know if this maybe could be its own annex, but, you know, recognizing that vulnerable populations always bear a disproportionate burden of disasters and just giving a lot of additional thought and planning to how we are going to serve those communities. Both preparing those communities, serving those communities during a disaster and then the different kinds of needs they have short and long term after that. So, thank you. Thanks so much for the presentation. Very helpful.
Thank you. Just to comment on that. So one of the things that we do with Coad is a lot of their outreach is around the preparedness for the recovery. And so making sure people have the right insurance, making sure that there's no gaps in their insurance, making sure that they are insured at the right level, providing a lot of information about renters' insurance. That is not a function of an OES, but it is a function of us to work with Coad and make sure that information is out there. So they're constantly giving people some of that information, their long-term recovery plan, actually helps somebody who's underinsured, lost their home, get into an ADU unit after the glass fire. So we're definitely working on those things. It's just really where a community-based organization comes in and government kind of steps out of that conversation.
Yeah, just to follow, I think that's a great point because I think we also, part of it is perhaps planning for thinking about who the vulnerable populations might be. You know, I think about in the last fires that we lost a lot of people in the community who couldn't afford to do the rebuild. And so, but we wouldn't have necessarily identified them as vulnerable populations beforehand. So, great question there. I think the other thing that I want to complement this document for is it helps us just articulate what our assumptions are. For example, that FEMA will be available for individual assistance, right? And that's what we hope will be, but that's not a bad, you know, some of these things become placeholders to say, okay, if it's not there, we were relying on it here. So we need to spend some time thinking about what the backup plan is too. So, and I also like the fact that there's training opportunities in here for, you know, folks on county staff, city staff, but also someone in the public could read this document and say, I want to learn more about that. So my one request is, Sheriff, you helped us with some crisis communications training in our last, we had a special meeting and I would love to, this is not urgent, but sometime have a presentation where we could think about what is the role of the board in a recovery process. So that could be an interesting training exercise too. Supervisor Manfree.
Sheriff, yeah, thank you so much for this really well-thought-out plan and update. It's so helpful and obviously really, really important. So I have, I guess, a question, a comment. So one is like, and I apologize if I missed this in your presentation, but how will you keep this current over years? Because, you know, like this is current right now, but as others have already mentioned, things can change and things can improve. And I know you said you are going to keep incorporating feedback that you get from, you know, knowledge from disasters that we experience or other places experience. But just wondering if there's like a regular review process? And something that I noticed particularly with COVID, because it was a very slow disaster, it went on for years, was that departments, all kinds of departments throughout the county made staff available to respond to COVID. There were people from like the flood district helping manage the lines at vaccination clinics, for example. And so every time you're pulling people off of one job and they're doing another job, you have a disruption to whatever important work they were already assigned to be doing. And I'm just wondering if there's, I do see there's like a demobilization unit under the planning section here, but I did a fine function and I couldn't really find much more about that in the document. So I guess my question, I don't know if it's a question or a comment, but just to consider like what is the impact on county function generally when you're pulling people away from one thing for another thing? And I'm sure that's true in the sheriff's office. You know, you have all kinds of daily responsibilities and if something happens, you're interrupted. It's, it can be a setback, you know? So how do you get back to kind of rehabilitate, bounce back from that? And again, vulnerable populations being considered is great. And I think the phasing element of this is also really good. So positive feedback.
Thank you.
Yeah, I would just remind that, and shout out really, I haven't been involved in pretty much every disaster since the 2014 earthquake at a manager level. County employees always step up. So really a shout out to them. They're all disaster service workers at the end of the day. So regardless if it's the pandemic, which was, we really felt it because to your point, Supervisor Manfree, that was a really long one. But even a four-day fire, it impacts the daily operations of other county functions. So we're borrowing people from the library or from Health and Human Services. So, you know, that's part of our responsibility as a county government to respond to these disasters and to draw from our resources and that's what we do. And that's what county workers do from all the departments in the county in every disaster. So on to Supervisor Gallagher's comments and that you echoed. One of the recovery support functions is in that space. So depending on the disaster, we would definitely have that section chief for operations and the ROC would look at that RSF, that recovery support function and make sure we're hitting those vulnerable populations and meeting the demands of the disaster, what we need to do to help folks. And then also, I think Supervisor Gallagher's comments, and I think Supervisor Cottrell mentioned them as well, in terms of preparedness, your board aides and the five of you and Supervisor Ramos isn't here are a big part of that preparedness. So we thank you for all you do to kind of educate the community. And one thing that was eye-opening for me before the pandemic was going with a large team of healthcare providers from Napa County and HHSA providers to Anniston, Alabama for a training hospital exercise and seeing all kinds of presentations about potential pandemics on earth. You know, for some reason, a lot of them are like in Central Africa or South America. And I remember just, you know, being a cop, listening to these PowerPoints and telling at the time, Dr. Berlusio, I could have gone the rest of my life without knowing about these bacterias and viruses that are out there. And her comments to me was like, those are easy because they're so incredibly lethal. A really dangerous one would be something that's harder to detect, harder to test for, harder to find, and really mild symptoms, so you can't really contain the spread. And as she's telling me this, she's basically describing COVID, like three years before COVID happened. So when COVID happened in one of our first meetings, one of her staff said, remember that scary conversation we had in the middle of that PowerPoint? I said, yes, like that's what this is. So, and I share that story of not to make light of COVID, but to let you know that your teams at HHSA are always, always preparing for the next public health disaster. So that's part of their role.
Great point, Sheriff. Thank you. Supervisor Alessio.
Oh, I was going to add to Supervisor Manfree. So as far as the update's concerned, this is a living document, so we will update it as needed. We'll look at our EOP, we'll look at our recovery after a disaster. If a disaster does not happen, there is a process where CAL OES actually provides us guidance to update our emergency operations plan every two to three years. It's loose guidance, but the last update was in 2020, so most of the work was done and data collection was done in 2019, prior to the pandemic, even though it was the 2020 update. So I started working on that in 2023, which is why this is the 2024 update. We are presenting it now in 2025 because it's already gone to CAL OES. That was a six-month process. So we will be looking at it like every two, about two years, and then beginning the process again. Some updates will be dependent on a disaster that happened in the county or things that we know that happened in the nation or the state. And then also to mention departments, we actually have a county-wide continuity of operations plan that OES worked on last year. It was actually an after-action improvement from the COVID pandemic. So it does outline what are essential functions for each department. So we had involvement from every department within Napa County and that we looked at all of those important functions and what has to continue. And it also has a scale of in the short term, so 72 hours, and then weeks, and then months, what has to continue in the county. And it outlines when they would need, certain departments would need people back to work. And again, like the sheriff said, we have so many people interested in working in our EOC. It's never been a problem.
Okay, thank you. Thank you for this report, despite the time of time.
Despite the time it took, it's here, it's important, it's going to be helpful. I really love the opening line that, you know, recovery starts before the disaster. And as you have it in your graph, it's during that preparedness time, and that's what we're discussing here. As a, as a county that has seen more than its fair share of disasters over my lifetime and before, from, you know, those, those chronic floods we used to get, to what's really, you know, earthquakes and then the fires, pandemic, you know, COAD, I want to say something about COAD. COAD was a result of the 2017 fire. We have a very engaged community that is, really helps their neighbors and their community wants to help and wants to know how they can do that. And I just want, for people who don't know who, what COAD is, I'm going to just read off their description because it's well said. Napa Valley Community Organization Active in Disaster, that's COAD. COAD Community Organization Active in Disaster. Develops and enhances partnerships for communications, coordination, collaboration among the whole community, including the nonprofit sector, faith-based organizations, government agencies, and the private sector during all phases of a disaster. And in 17, 2017, before I was even elected to City Council, I was in the shelter at Crosswalk Church as victims from the 2017 fire were being transported there. And there was a, there was a disconnect between what was happening and what the community could do, and everybody was kind of just in shock. We were truly, truly in shock, and understandably so. So, again, having this recovery start prior to the disaster, and then having, you know, whether it be the board supervisors, you know, COAD or members of COAD have an understanding of what our role is, is probably going to need to be an ongoing training and communicate, uh, community education process, because we could easily forget this part. And the last thing I want is that all this hard work get be put on a bookshelf, and though it's a living document, nobody really is actively understanding because disasters don't come with, you know, with a date and time that, you know, it's going to happen. It's always, it's always a surprise. So, on that, I don't have a lot of comments, just really appreciation for, for the work, all that, all the folks that you included in the stakeholders, key stakeholders. I want to thank this board for bringing this back. What a great idea. I mean, really, it truly is, you know, it's really important. And to think that Napa County is ahead of the game other than other counties that haven't thought about this, I think this is only going to help us, you know, for the next. So, thank you.
Yeah, thanks to everyone for the comments. And I think Sheriff, you and I looked at other counties' recovery plans as well, and I think it is, this one really reflects who we are as a county, which I think is important as well. So, and I wanted to give a shout out to Mike Hooper, too, because I think having someone who has worked on these with other counties, that's really expertise we don't have. We know our county well, you two know so many different disasters, and it's great to get that assistance. So, good job. Thank you for that. I will quickly ask, is there any public comment on this item? Okay, then I will say thanks to you both. And at this point, it is noon, I'm going to go ahead and ask that we take a half an hour recess so we could have some lunch and then come back. Does that work for my colleagues? Okay. Mr. Alsop, does that work for staff schedules?
I'm going to say yes. I see some people out here that are part of the next presentation, but I think they'll all be, you all good for 30 minutes? Awesome, thank you.
Thank you. Okay, we'll, we'll reconvene at 12:30 then.
Thank you, Ms. Hoskins. We are returning to our Board of Supervisors meeting for May 20th, 2025, and we are now on item 12A, Napa Bariessa Resort Improvement District. Good afternoon, team.
Good afternoon. I am Sarah Geis, Supervising Staff Services Analyst for Napa Bariessa Resort Improvement District. I'm filling in for Chris Silk, the District Engineer. He's out of town, so this is my first time, so bear with me.
Welcome.
Thank you. I come before you today to adopt a resolution accepting the district's engineer's report and imposing an availability charge for fiscal year '26. It's a $10 per parcel per month water fee and a $10 per parcel per month for sewer. This will bring roughly $127,300 for revenue. We're accounting for about 4.5% delinquency rate. This is about 15% of the operating revenue for the district. The other 80% comes from user rates, and then the rest of the 5% is some miscellaneous taxes. There are approximately 552 parcels in the district. The availability charge was established in 1996, and it's $240 per parcel. So, if you have any questions or comments.
I have a question. So like, how has the engagement with the community been? Are they aware that this is coming?
Yes, it's been going on since 1996, so they are aware. It's on their tax roll every year.
No, but I mean, are they aware of this specific increase, or?
It's, we have not increased it. It's, it's the same.
Oh, okay. Okay, sorry, my misunderstanding.
No worries.
So it's just a reauthorization of a continuing, okay?
Exactly.
Great. Any other questions for Ms. Geis at this point? Okay, I will go ahead and open it up for any public comment in the room, on the phones. Okay, and I'll bring it back to the board for discussion and a motion.
I will move to adopt a resolution accepting the district engineer's report and imposing the availability charges for fiscal year '25-'26 of $10 per parcel per month for water service and $10 per parcel per month for sewer service for the Napa Bariessa Resort Improvement District.
I will second.
Okay, we have a motion and a second. I will just go ahead and note that I did not actually state that I was opening the public hearing. So, no, that's all right. We can, we can have a motion standing, and we, the public hearing is open. We had no public comment, and now I will close the public hearing. I will bring it back to the board for a vote. So, a motion by Supervisor Gallagher, a second by Supervisor Manfree. All those in favor?
Aye.
Motion carries unanimously. Thank you, Ms. Geis.
Thank you.
You can tell Mr. Silk that you went, went right away, so. All right, that brings us to 12B. We will conduct a public hearing to consider any objections or protests with respect to special taxes for the Silverado Community Service District. All right, that brings us to 12B. We will conduct a public hearing to consider any objections or protests with respect to special taxes for the Silverado Community Service District. Accept the special tax report for fiscal year 2526 and adopt the recommended maximum special tax totaling 224,466 for the fiscal year. So I'll open the public hearing and welcome Mr. Letterer.
Thank you, Chair Cottrell. You delivered most of my staff report, right there. The Silverado Community Services District is a special district that provides various services specifically around the Silverado Country Club, primarily median landscaping and sidewalks. So each year, we're required to do a report to, to analyze the costs and the potential fees associated with the district. And we're here today to, as you said, open the public hearing, which you've done. We're going to adopt the special tax report, which is attached, and, and adopt the proposed increase. We do have an advisory group at Silverado that has reviewed this and is support, is in support of the staff recommendation, which is to increase the fee by 2.69%, which is the Bay Area CPI, and the maximum that we are allowed to do. So we recommend you take public comment, if there is any, close the public hearing, and then adopt the tax report and the recommended special tax. And I want to recommend Kathryn Chambers, who is sitting behind me, who did all the heavy lifting on this, and will do this next year.
Thank you for the report, and thank you, Ms. Chambers. At this point, I will ask if there's any public comment in the room or on the phones. Okay, then I will go ahead and close the public hearing and bring it back to the board for any discussion or comment or a motion. Go for it.
Go ahead. Okay, I will move to accept the annual special tax report for fiscal year 2526 and adopt the recommended maximum special tax totaling 224,466 for fiscal year 2526.
Thank you for the motion, Supervisor Gallagher. I'll second. A second. A motion by Supervisor Gallagher, second by Supervisor Manfree. All those in favor?
Aye.
Motion carries unanimously. Thank you. And we are now on item 13, 13A. We will conduct a public hearing and adopt a resolution, resolutions regarding certain, regarding changing certain fees for the Napa County Airport and the Environmental Health Decision Division of Planning, Building, and Environmental Services. Good morning, Yasmin. I will go ahead and open the public hearing.
Hi, good afternoon, Chair Cottrell, and members of the board. Jasmine Elo, Management Analyst with the CEO's office. Today, we have recommendations to update certain fees from environmental health according to the fee study addendum that was presented at the last board meeting, as well as the airport's annual fee updates. Environmental Health recommends updating 12 certified unified program agencies, or COOPA, fees based on a new time estimate, and the addition of nine building referral fees. The airport recommends updating their fee schedule as indicated in Exhibit A to the resolution. This includes fees for hangar rentals, parking, tie-down rentals, landing, and other miscellaneous services. These proposed changes were presented and supported by the Airport Advisory Commission, or the AAC, on April 7, 2025. Department staff and myself are available for any questions you may have.
Thank you, Jasmine. Are there questions for Ms. Elo at this point? Supervisor Gallagher.
Yeah, thank you so much, Ms. Elo, for, for the report, and I wanted to ask if you could just explain that issue with the time estimates. Did, how was that discovered, or were wrong numbers plugged into the model? Just, just curious if you could. All right, Mr. Ryan.
Morning, Chair, Supervisors. Yes, the, the error of the time estimates is related to the annual permitting fees. In the original model from MGT, they assumed annual fee, and when it's actually a tri-annual. So we worked with MGT to update those models, and that's why we're seeing a revised fee today.
Great. Thank you so much for the detail. Thanks.
Supervisor Gallagher. And Supervisor Alessio, doing it all over again.
Thank you. Just so I understand, if I read the report correctly, is it a 3% increase on the fee across the board for all areas? Because I saw that it says 3% for the hangar fee, and, but does that include like the parking fees and the other fees? Or is it just 3% on the one fee?
The 3% increase will be for the monthly rates. It looks like for the hangar rental fees and airport storage room fees. And we do have the airport manager, if there's clarification on that item.
Great, because it talks about the parking fees. I just want to make sure that this, I understand the fee structure, that if it's 3% across the board, or specifically just in this, that one area.
Good afternoon, Supervisor Alessio through the chair. So a number of these fees are changing, partly because the actual use of the airport is changing. And so we wanted to kind of redefine some of the fees that better fit the way the airport is going to be used now and into the future. So as, as an example, the unauthorized vehicle parking cost fee changed from $20 to $50 because we can foresee that there will be a lot more parked cars at the airport, and we want to make sure that the airport is not gridlocked or constrained in any way by the number of new cars that will be coming in. So that is more than 3%. On, on the whole, all of our monthly agreements were changed by 3% based on CPI year-over-year. But as an example, we added a new remote gate opener on a keychain. Well, it's different than the one that goes on your visor. It's a little tiny one. So we added that fee for the retail cost of, of selling those little keychain remotes. So we are in, operate as an enterprise, so we're looking to monetize our retailing of different things, our rental of different things to better fit how the airport is going to be used in the coming year.
Thank you. And in terms of the parking fee, are we talking about the public parking, if you will? It's out the airport, but the general, maybe I shouldn't call it public. Is it the general parking, or the parking that's behind the gates that you, that requires a FOB?
So the FOB is for behind the gates for tenants, that instead of putting in a code that we provide them, they want the convenience of being able to click the remote.
Correct. I'm talking about the parking space. It's going up to 50, so I make sure that.
So that's unauthorized parking. That would be a vehicle that parks in a space that's not authorized for parking. Pulls up onto the grass, you know, leaves their car on the railroad tracks or in front of a operating gate to allow access to another part of the airport. We would then have a fee of $50 per day for leaving their car there unattended.
Thank you. Well, at first thinking maybe we should decrease the, that fee base of, I was thinking it was the general parking area, but this is outside the general parking area where there's a fee, could be a fine, if you will, for that. So, okay, thank you very much.
Thanks for that clarification. Appreciate that. Any other questions for staff at this point? Okay, then I will go ahead and close the public hearing and bring it back for any further, we don't have further questions, so I would ask for a motion. And I will, I can restate it. Can I have a motion and a second to adopt the resolutions changing the fees for the airport and the Environmental Health Division as requested?
So moved.
Thank you, Supervisor Alessio.
I'll second.
Thank you, Supervisor Manfree. All those in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed? Motion carries unanimously. All right. That was quick. I will go ahead and adjourn this meeting to the next Board of Supervisors' regular meeting on Tuesday, June 3, 2025. Thank you, team.
Thank you, and happy Memorial Day to all.